Good evening and welcome to the January 8th, 2024 meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. Established by state law, the commission is composed of seven volunteer voting age residents appointed to four-year terms by the city council. The Planning Commission is not a policy-setting body, that's the city council. The Planning Commission is a policy implementing body, and we review development proposals on public and private lands for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinance, which can be found on the city's website. The commission reviews all development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control, variance, minor subdivision, and environmental review associated with these projects. The commission is a final decision-making body for these applications unless appealed to the city council. The commission also serves as a recommending body to the city council for major subdivisions, rezoning, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, and the environmental reviews and below-market-rate housing agreements associated with those projects. We work with staff in our city's planning division, which is responsible for coordinating enforcement of the zoning ordinance and related policies. Thank you for joining this evening. We encourage your participation, whether you are an applicant or member of the public. There will be an opportunity to speak publicly during general public comment, as well as for each agenda item. I'll turn to our clerk, Mr. Turner, to explain how members of the public can participate during those public comment periods.
Yes, thank you Chair Doe. During the public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions remotely or in person by clicking the hand icon on your screen if you are participating remotely, upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. For those calling into tonight's meeting, please click star nine on your keypad when the time comes, and that will notify staff that you would like to give public comment. If multiple people are speaking from the same account, please let us know at the beginning of your time, and we will make sure each speaker has their chance to speak. And if you are participating in person tonight, please fill out a speaker card located at the back of the room and hand it to me. Please make sure to list the agenda item or the subject to make sure we are listing you for the correct item. And with that, I will turn it back to you.
Thank you. This meeting is called to order and we'll move to the roll call. Commissioner Eric?
Present.
Commissioner Farrick?
Here.
Commissioner Riggs?
Present.
Vice Chair Schindler?
Present.
I am Chair Doe, I am present. Commissioner Barnes is absent, and that makes five of us present with one absent and one vacancy. C, reports and announcements. I'll turn to Mr. Perata for those.
Yes, thank you Chair Doe. So just one report announcement, so regarding that vacant Planning Commission position that the chair just mentioned. So the city council is holding interviews for the candidates for that position to fill that seat that Commissioner Harris vacated a few months back. So that would be to fulfill the remainder of her term. They'll hold interviews tomorrow evening, and then potentially appoint a member at the second meeting in January, which is January 23rd. And that concludes my reports and announcements.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Perata? None? Okay, great. So we'll move then to D, public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. You are not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment, other than to provide general information. So I'll turn to Mr. Turner to run public comment.
Yes, thank you Chair Doe. Once again, if you would like to give public comment on general public comments, these are non-agendized items, please click the raise hand button if you are participating by Zoom or star nine on your phone if you are calling in. At the moment, I don't see anybody online who would like to participate for general public comment, and I do not have any comment cards for general public comment.
Great, shall we just give it a quick moment?
And still no hands.
Okay, let's go ahead and close public comment then. And that brings us to E, the consent calendar. There are two items. E1, the minutes from October 23rd, 2023, and E2, the minutes from November 6th, 2023. And I believe that we are, we'll take public comment for the consent calendar before bringing it to the commission. So I think I'm turning it back to you, Mr. Turner.
All right. Once again, please click the raise hand button or star nine on your phone for the consent calendar if you would like to give a public comment. I do not have any comment cards, and I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, well, I think there's been enough time for people to consider if they want to make comments on the consent calendar. So we'll close public comment and ask if any commissioners would like to make a motion or pull an item for discussion.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
I'd like to pull the November 6th meeting simply because I would be abstaining for that particular vote.
Thank you Commissioner Riggs. Question to staff, does that mean we just, instead of voting on the entire consent calendar, vote?
Yeah, so through the chair, you can vote on each item individually. That'll be fine. And if I could take this opportunity to identify that Chair Doe did bring to staff's attention two minor edits to each of the minutes, or one edit to each, excuse me, each minute. And so we'll correct the typo of Commissioner Barnes's last name on page 18 and the adjournment time for the November 6th minutes from 7:32 to 8:32 PM. So we'll make those edits accordingly.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioners? Have any? No? All right, so let's vote and on, sorry, not vote on, would anyone like to make a motion for E1, October 23rd minutes? Commissioner Riggs?
I'd like to so move.
A first from Commissioner Riggs. Would anyone like to make a second? Vice Chair Schindler, is that a second?
Yes, that's a second.
Okay, thank you. A second from Vice Chair Schindler, and we will go ahead and vote. Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schindler?
Yes.
I am also a yes, that is five yeses, one absent. The motion passes. So we'll move to now E2, the November 6th, 2023 minutes. Would any commissioner like to make a motion? Vice Chair Schindler? I'll make a motion to pass E2. Thank you. A first from Vice Chair Schindler?
Second.
Thank you. A second from Commissioner Eric. And we'll go ahead and vote. Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs is abstaining, is that Commissioner Riggs?
That's correct.
And Vice Chair Schindler?
Yes.
I am also a yes, so that is one abstention, four yeses, and one absent, and that motion also passes. That brings us to F, the public hearing portion of our meeting this evening. Item F1 is a use permit for 154 Laurel Avenue. Consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit to demolish an existing single-story, single-family residence and construct a new two-story, single-family residence with a detached garage on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width in the R1U Single Family Urban Residential Zoning District. Determine this action is categorically exempt under CEQA Guideline Section 15303's Class 3 exemption for new construction or conversion of small structures. And I believe Mr. Hoek Leichner. Any updates or presentation from yourself or the applicant?
Good evening Commissioners. There are two edits for typos in the staff report that will be corrected. One on the data table for the left-side setback, and there was also a typo on the staff report for the intruding daylight planes on the right-hand side rather than the left. Those will be corrected in the staff report. We have received two emails of support from neighbors since the publication of the report. And then Steve Cullum, who is the project designer, is online and available to answer any questions. He doesn't have a presentation to present tonight.
Great, thank you. Any clarifying questions for staff or the applicant before we take public comment for this item? Commissioner Riggs?
Yes, thank you. Through the chair, question just for staff. I note that the basement plan does not include the usual names for rooms such as recreation, gym, bedroom, office. Does this have anything to do with occupancy restrictions, or is this just the personal choice of the applicant?
Hi, this is Steve Cullum, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I think you might have directed that to staff, but they didn't answer. The owner wanted flexible space down there. He's an engineer type and has all kinds of microscopes and things that he's thinking of being able to store down there and whatnot. So it's not a normal, you know, where you normally see exercise rooms and media rooms and that kind of thing.
All right, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Riggs. Any other clarifying questions? No, then Mr. Turner, if you could take public comment on this item?
Yes, thank you. So this is for item F1. Once again, if you would like to give public comment and you are participating virtually, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen or press star nine if you are participating by phone. And please fill out a comment card and bring it up to me if you would like to participate in person. And at the moment, I don't have any comment cards and no hands raised online for this item. Maybe give it a few seconds. Still no commenters.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions, discussion, and ultimately a motion. Would anyone like to start? Commissioner Riggs?
Thank you. Yes, if I may, a question from staff. One of the neighbors commented on the need for landscaping. I believe it was adjacent to the garage. I didn't quite follow the need for it, but there was the implication from the applicant that this additional landscaping would be part of the project. Can you just tell me if that need was satisfied in terms of the neighbor?
We did discuss with the applicant, and they're going, they didn't provide a landscape plan as part of this process. So when they go for their building permits, that will be addressed during that time.
All right, and just out of curiosity, is the neighbor informed during that process?
I have informed the neighbor that that's the process is going to be taking place during the building permit stage.
I'm sorry?
The neighbor has been informed that that will be happening during the building permit stage, that their concerns will be addressed.
All right, but it's not typically run past the neighbor. It's just the ball is carried by staff at this point.
So maybe I can just clarify. So this discussion between the two neighbors would occur outside of the city and outside of staff. So the neighbors appear to be working out some potential landscaping solutions that were not provided to the city. They were identified in the comment record as something that they are working on, you know, in terms of like what was provided to the city. As part of a building permit, as Connor was mentioning, the applicant has indicated to the city that they would work with that neighbor and identify that at that time, work together on that. So as it's not a city requirement for the project, the city hasn't been involved, you know, in conditioning the project one way or another to come back to the staff for that.
I'm sorry, you're fading out a little bit there.
Yeah, I'm also working through getting my voice back after a week plus of this.
Oh, sorry.
Where'd I leave off for you? Basically, the applicant and the neighbor, this is a matter that they have been working out based on the comments that we've received from them in terms of the project description and the information in that letter from the applicant. And so it's not a staff-initiated process, any landscaping improvements or changes or modifications.
All right, but it is part of the record in terms of the Planning Commission review because it's been presented as a letter of endorsement by the neighbor with that terminology.
And that's correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Riggs. Any other questions or comments? Well, I'll, unless I was, I just have a comment and a question for staff. I, first the comment. I find the shingles and the siding on the exterior and the stone base and the exposed rafters make for a cohesive and warm design in looking at the perspectives that were provided. My question is, it's just a neutral question more for my understanding. And I think it's evident from the facts that were given in the staff report. But the setbacks, it's for the main home. It's not for the detached, the detached garage is not part of that, the side, the side and rear setbacks. Is that correct? They refer to the home and not to the detached structure?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm appreciative of Commissioner Riggs bringing up the neighbors' concern about additional landscaping around the garage and appreciate staff's explanation that appears they are working on that outside of the city's involvement. I am not trying to cut off discussion, but maybe trying to indicate that I am supportive of this project. But Vice Chair Schindler?
Thank you Chair Doe. I similarly appreciate the attention to detail in the craftsman design here, and particularly the emphasis on the south-facing living spaces. And I'm glad that that large heritage tree in front is being retained. From a process perspective, I appreciate just having the easy, digestible, written feedback support from the neighbors. And I am prepared to make a motion to grant the use permit.
Is that a first, Vice Chair?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. A first from Vice Chair Schindler. Commissioner Riggs?
Yes, I'll second the motion.
A second from Commissioner Riggs. And if there's no further questions or discussion, we'll go ahead and vote on this item. Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schindler?
Yes.
I am also a yes, that's five yeses and one abstention, and the motion passes.
This is Steve Cullum, thank you very much.
I'm sorry. One absence, five yeses, one absence, the motion passes. Thank you for correcting me. And that brings us to our second item, F2. Use permit for 495 Gilbert Avenue. Consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit to determine the floor area limit, FAL, on a lot less than 5,000 square feet in area and to remodel and construct first- and second-story additions to an existing non-conforming one-story, single-family residence on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width, depth, and area in the R1U Single Family Urban Residential Zoning District. The proposal would exceed 50% of the replacement value in a 12-month period for a non-conforming structure and requires a use permit approval. The proposal would also exceed 50% of the existing floor area and is considered equivalent to a new structure. Determine this action is categorically exempt under CEQA Guideline Section 15301's Class 1 exemption for existing facilities. And Mr. Turner, any updates or presentation from the applicant if they're present?
Yes, thank you Chair Doe. I did want, excuse me, sorry. Did want to update. We did receive one comment letter after publication of the staff report from a neighbor generally expressing concerns in the sill height to the rear of the property. Other than that, I do not have any updates. But the applicant, I'm here for any questions, and the applicant is here as well to take any comments, questions.
Great, thank you. Excuse me. And did the applicant want to make a presentation or just? Or not, just curious?
They'd like to say if he was, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
495 Gilbert Avenue. So we bought this house in January 2022, and we lived there since then. And like in November 2022, we had our first baby. And we love the neighborhood, and we want to continue living there. And but now, you know, like the current house is too small. It's like only two-bedroom, one bathroom, so it's not too small. So that's why we want to do some addition to the existing house. And the existing house is like a non-conforming structure. And we want to keep it as is and build a second story on top of it. And all the additions will be, will conform to all the, like, set-by requirement or the lot coverage stuff. Yeah, and also, yeah, in terms of like the neighbor outreach, right? I think we have some, like our two adjacent neighbors have some privacy concerns. And we, I show them our detailed plans and discuss with them in person. And I think we agree that, like, we try to, we agree to make the lower half of the second-floor windows like frosted to alleviate their privacy concern. Yeah, I think they agree that, yeah. And that's all. Thanks, thanks Commissioners for considering our use permit. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions for staff or the applicant? There are none, I will turn it to you, Mr. Turner, for public comment on this item.
Thank you Chair Doe. Once again, if you would like to give public comment for item F2 and you are participating remotely, please click the raise hand button on your screen or click star nine if you're participating on the phone. And if you would like to give public comment in person, please hand me a comment card, and we will make sure you're able to give public comment. You can, you can give your public comment and then fill it out afterward. That would be okay.
309 Nova Lane, although it's mentioned as 441 Gilbert, it was before addis change for the current property. Our main concern is privacy. The second-story windows look directly into the bathroom where we bathe our five- and seven-year-old, seem to be eight-year-old children. We do it there just because it's bigger bathtub than in their bathroom. And so we just bathe them both same time. We have privacy concerns. The one challenge I have with the comment in the letter is that, as one of the neighbors that raises, I didn't actually agree, nor do we have a discussion about obscuring the glass as a compromise to alleviate privacy concerns. So that's news to me. It may have been done by the other listed party, 350 Barton, but I can definitively say that neither myself or my wife agree to any compromise about that.
Thank you for your comment.
This will be the last call for public comment.
Hello, thank you very much. So I live at 311 Nova Lane, which is the lot that's the back corner of the remodeling question. I do want to say generally in favor of the project. Certainly realize that they want to expand their house, and that is a reasonable thing to do. It is a great neighborhood. We are the last one-story house left in that area and have large bay windows in the back. And so we are concerned, of course, with privacy, both in our master bedroom and the living room from the second-story windows of the new house in question. We've actually made the same comment for all of the two stories that have gone up around us. And so in consideration of trying to maintain privacy, something such as raised sill heights is what we have requested before, and maybe going to a wider window that is higher, so still lets in a sufficient amount of light. So just wanted to put that for your consideration of trying to maintain the privacy of looking down into our bedroom, living room, and backyard, general backyard. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comment cards, hands raised?
I do not see any comment cards, and no more hands raised at the moment.
Okay, I think we've given people plenty of time to decide if they would like to make a comment. So we'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission for any questions, discussion, and again, ultimately, a motion on this item. Would anyone like to start? Commissioner Eric?
Through the chair, I think I have a question to staff. Am I allowed to address questions to folks who provided public comment? And are they allowed to address them?
So that is a good question. I think ultimately that is up to the chair. We typically do not recommend that the commission engage in a dialogue with non-applicants through the dais. And so certainly, if there are clarifying questions, that would be at the discretion of the chair. But our recommendation is public comments received, and now public comments closed. It's for consideration by the commission at the dais. So unless it's a clarifying question, and I wouldn't recommend that the commission engage in a back-and-forth with the public commenter. I think the comments been received, can be taken and deliberated now at the dais.
Okay, well, I'm happy, thank you. I'm happy to abide by precedent and certainly happy to abide by the chair. So I will, I don't have anything else to say for now.
Okay. Well, I appreciate staff weighing in on that. I hope that didn't cut off something that you felt was very important to the discussion. Okay, well, time to think about it. Comments or questions? it. Comments or questions from other commissioners? Vice Chair Schindler.
Thank you Chair Doe. Through the chair, I have a question for the applicant. I want to be sure that I understand the nature of the proposal for making the bottom half of the windows, I believe you said, I don't know if you said opaque or frosted. I think the language in the plans is frosted. I think most of the windows in question are five feet tall, if I recall correctly, and about two and a half feet off of the plate. So you're talking about windows that are opaque from about five feet down. So they're letting light through. So, okay, so I see you nodding. So I am assuming that that is a correct interpretation. Just so that folks who are playing along at home can participate, would you mind just coming up to the microphone? Thank you. Thank you. I just want to be sure that the public who is maybe tuning in on Zoom is can get the full experience.
Yeah, yes. I think so. Our current like proposed sill height is like 2.5 feet, right? And then the window is like five feet in height. So and we propose to like foster or obscure the lower half of the window, which means that like, like the effective sill height will be five feet, right? I think five feet is quite high because I'm like five feet, six inches. I think it's around my eye level. I don't think I can see much from, from that, right? So that's why we believe like, like effective five feet sill height should, should alleviate or the privacy concern.
Thank you for clarifying. I just wanted to be sure that I understood.
And also can I add one thing, like for our neighbors in, one of the neighbors, sorry, I forgot your name, but actually I talked to your wife. And I said, like, I also proposed like the frosted window, like a lower half of the window. And so your wives didn't like agree. They didn't say no. That's why I'm saying, that's why I mean they agree. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. May I ask, I have a, through the chair, I have a, just a follow-up question on that one for the applicant. Were other options evaluated? For example, a higher sill height?
Because like, those are like a bedroom, right? I think we cannot make the sill height too high, right? That will, because we need like an egress window for the bedrooms. I think that's like the building code requirement, right? So that's one thing, that's why I think we, some requirement, we cannot make it, we cannot make all the windows five feet in height, still height five feet, right? That's not the building code. So that's why we're proposing like frost, frosted window.
Thank you. One more, just on the same set of proposals for the opaque bottom half, that was to address two sides of the building, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Follow-up question. There are on the right side, I believe described as the right side of the building, which is actually the front to Gilbert Street, the face, the side that faces Gilbert Street. I didn't see any notation about opaque or frosted glass on those windows. But what I did observe was that two of the windows are in the showers. And they, if I'm interpreting the plans correctly, they are two and a half feet wide and five feet tall, and they are in the showers. And then there are another set of windows of the same dimensions directly over the bathtub in another, in another bathroom.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, but I think for those, for the windows in, in, in the, in the restroom, I think they should be opaque or in nature or something. Maybe I can ask my like designer to, to answer that.
Yeah. I think this is not sort of a grounds for holding a use permit, in my personal opinion. But I would make a very strong recommendation that the opaque, that those windows either be made opaque completely, or at least for some of them, that the sill heights be raised. I also think that raising the sill height on those windows would contribute to a greater variation in window sizes along that front facade of the house. One of the things that struck me with a non-architectural perspective was just that they were fairly, they were all the same size. There was an, it was a missed opportunity to add interest and variation in window size on the front of the house. So either opaque or changing the sill height of those windows in the shower and above the bathtubs would be a strong advisement.
Okay, yeah. I think we want to keep all the windows at the same height. I think it's like kind of a design choice, try to make it looks greater, prettier. That's, I think, one of our design patterns or, yeah.
I think that was it for my questions. Can I ask a follow-up question to Vice Chair Schindler? You mentioned that the windows are needed for egress. I wonder, could we pull up the plans for, I emailed Mr. Turner earlier today and I, and I think I was, you provided some information, if I understood correctly, that the windows in question, and there's multiple windows on these bedrooms, so it'd be helpful to, thank you, have something to refer to. Questions facing the rear, facing the neighbor behind, I think you informed me that those were not for egress. I just wanted to con, just make sure we're understanding which windows we're talking about are for egress and which aren't.
Correct, yeah. According to the plans, they're actually shown on the floor plan, those are not egress windows, the windows in question.
And, okay, oh, thank you.
If you can see these, I don't know if I can. Sorry, doesn't look like presenter view lets me zoom in, but if you can see my cursor down here where this one is, that would be an egress window. And then this one over here would be an egress window. These two windows facing the rear are not egress windows, according to the plans.
Got it. That is very helpful. I'll just add, add just a thought. Since I've been on this commission, I feel like we have, in response to privacy concerns, this commission has often asked for obscure windows, never opaque, usually obscure, letting light through, but not vision. I actually have not experienced a precedent where we raised sill height, so I'm not quite sure if I, how I feel about asking, because I feel like that substantially changes the, you know, the look of the elevation and if there was design intent. So I'll just maybe throw that feeling out there that I'm not, and open it up to other commissioners' thoughts.
Sure.
Commissioner Farrick?
Thank you. Just in response to that, Chair Doe, there is precedence for that. I can't, I don't want to try to name specific properties, but there was a application that I was in the shoes of the neighbors that was kind of diagonal behind our single-family home, one of the last in my little pocket. And the sill height of this very large rear window was raised. It still is quite impactful for my privacy, but nevertheless, it is precedent that sill heights on non-egress windows in the rear, that doesn't impact the visual design of the building from the street front. I know there's precedence for that. So therefore, I guess if I'll, I'll just add, that would be my recommendation on those two rear-facing windows, just because I do feel like obscured glass is a little trickier to maintain over time. And so that would be something that I think we should consider.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrick. Commissioner Eric?
Thank you. I always appreciate understanding history, since I'm new to this commission. I will say on, touching on another note to what I understand to be the history of this commission, that this is a non-conforming lot that is making additions that are all conforming, all of which are conforming. And it is my understanding that usually this commission does not request significant deviations or tries to block a use permit for additions that are entirely conforming and would not otherwise need to come to planning commission, but are because of existing non-conforming things. So I'm inclined to follow that precedent. I also have experienced while on this commission, and I think it's generally good practice, that we try and be as, be least prescriptive as possible with regards to design, because there are design choices that people make. In this case, I think there are perhaps legitimate privacy concerns that the applicant seems to be addressing. And I think in this case, it's, the applicant is doing something. We should respect that. I don't think it's appropriate to be prescriptive as to what exactly needs to be done to address the privacy concerns. There's a concern, the applicant is addressing it. The people who are impacted by that concern certainly can put up curtains or drapes on their house if they're concerned. And so I would be inclined to approve this use permit as recommended by staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Eric. Commissioner Farrick?
I just wanted to add, there is also other suggestions and/or requirements the commission has made historically that sometimes can help, is landscaping solutions, various types of hedge or kind of, you know, visually, whatever, you know what I'm trying to say? I can't think of the words right now. So that's another thought, just to add out there that could be a combination of things.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrick. Commissioner Riggs?
Sure. Just because it's become the topic up here in the DIAS, through the, well, I'll just say extensive time I've spent on the commission, actually obscure glass was one of the more recent solutions. The first solution in the past has been raising the window sill and five feet became almost a standard request for a neighbor that was concerned about their first-story windows, whether or not they have two stories. It's the lower windows. And one of the reasons for that is that you can adjust your blinds for privacy and yet daylight by slotting them up. And that works great unless you're aiming at a second floor window. So landscaping indeed became sort of the, the go-between obscure glass and raised sills. And we have been able to use that, I think fairly frequently and maybe optimistically, but where that's been possible, that has worked. I wouldn't like to contribute that on this project, the commitment to obscure glass may be, may be the best that we can ask. I do agree with Mr. Eric that we like to limit how much we push on design. I mean, if we were doing conventional design review, I would, for example, comment that the windows on the second floor being five foot high to match the first floor actually somewhat disturbs the balance of the building. And I would make them four foot six. But that is an architectural determination that I think should be left to you and your, and your designer. So in this case, I would just like to clarify that as, as indicated by the applicant, the lower half on two facades, the lower half of the windows will be obscure glass. And we want to be careful about the word because obscure glass gives you the option to use frosted, but there's multiple other glass types out there that will obscure the view, but don't, don't just fog it over the way frosted glass does. And so I'm actually going to make a motion to that effect. I would, I just can't resist asking though, effectively you have a five-bedroom house proposed and you have a one-car garage. Just wanted to make sure you have thought through the convenience issue of having just plain dew on the car every morning as you go out to drive to work, because there's only one space for a car.
Remove one heritage tree in order to add a new, like a compliant uncovered parking space there. So basically, we'll have two parking spaces. Yeah.
Oh, I understand that. I just, just that unless it's in a garage or a carport, you will get dew on the car every morning. And as long as you're used to that and accommodated to that, it certainly meets the, meets the letter of our code. So with that, I would like to move to establish the maximum floor area per the staff report and approve the use permit with the one project-specific requirement that the lower half of the second-floor windows on two facades, as discussed tonight, would be obscure glass.
Through the chair, can I make a comment? Did you mean to include that, the word rear facade, like the word rear, just to be super clear that it's that facade you're talking about?
I believe we have two facades that were addressed by two different neighbors, so I'm just referring to those two. Yes.
Thank you. First, from Commissioner Riggs, Vice Chair Schindler. I'd offer a second with the same addition, project-specific addition, clarifying that it is obscure on the bottom, glass on the bottom half. And I apologize for the use of opaque glass earlier in my commentary.
Thank you, Vice Chair Schindler. I had a question, which is not, not indicative of what, how I'm feeling about the project. I just wanted to clarify, when you say half, when I look at the, I'm just trying to wrap my head around what it'll look like. When I look at the windows on that rear elevation, they're divided into thirds. So would the obscure frosted line kind of being in the middle of that middle section? And again, I'm not trying to prescribe where it goes. I'm just trying to understand what it would.
Yeah, I think it's just exactly middle. Yeah, because we said lower half, right? Just lower half, exactly half of the window will be obscured.
Okay, so literally half. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, I just want to add one more thing. If labor things, then like they want more privacy protection, we're also open to like, like plant some trees along the, along, along the property lines to, yeah, if that could help.
Yeah. And I'm just going back to the obscure glass. This is again, clearly, you know, this may be a design preference, but I guess it would have occurred to me to align the obscurity, if it's something that can be seen, to align it with the, the pattern of the windows. But I appreciate that clarification. You know, I actually won't make a comment about the, the other thing I was going to comment on. A first from Commissioner Riggs and a second from Vice Chair Schindler. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Farrick?
I just would like to make a comment that I agree with the chair around the middle might actually be kind of distractingly not preferable from a design standpoint. So I guess, you know, I would recommend either one, the first third or second third, or make the window panes themselves be, you know, able to be naturally divided in the middle so that they're not, there's not a single pane with a different type of glass for half of it, if that if that makes sense.
Yes, yeah, that, you put it well. That.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, we can definitely change the, change our plan, yeah, to reflect that.
Just so that the window, yeah, where that, where that point is that's obscured, it's at a pane, not a middle of a pane, if that makes sense. Anyway, so that would be my comment. And to offer a suggestion, if you're looking for not a thick or deep landscape solution, I'm sure you can talk to many landscapers, but one that worked in the situation that I'm in is called Carolina compacta, and they can grow tall and very thin so they don't take up a lot of precious yard space in our small lots.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrick. All right. Oh, Commissioner Riggs.
Yeah, through the chair. I, I think it's appropriate that I modify my motion to indicate that at least the bottom 50% and to align with a horizontal mullion.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. Usually I'd say, that sounds awfully prescriptive, but I think in light of what we both express, I would.
In this case.
Yes, I would support that. All right. And I believe now we are ready to vote on the motion that we have.
Chair Doe, apologies. Can we just make sure that that's acceptable to the seconder as well, which I believe it is?
Yes.
The modification to the first?
Thank you, thank you. For Vice Chair Schindler, is that amenable to your?
Yes, I think so. But let me be sure that I understand the, the modification that Commissioner Riggs is proposing. So at least 50% and aligned with a horizontal pane divider? Or is it an or question, an or statement?
Yeah, and at least 50%, because if the applicant decides, oh, the heck with it, I'll just do the, I like the pattern in three, so I'll do the bottom two lights. Lights being the pieces of glass between the mullions, then that option is available. But either way, it should align with the mullion, and I'm grateful to the chair for having picked up that not-so-small item.
I am amenable to the, the new modification. That's fine.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair Schindler. I want to make sure you're comfortable with that. I believe now we are ready to vote on this motion that we have on the table. If everyone is clear on it, yes? Okay. Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schindler?
Yes.
I am also a yes. That's five yeses, one absent. And the motion passes. And congratulations on the addition to your home. F3, a use permit for 765 Stanford Avenue. Consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit to demolish an existing one-story, single-family residence and detached garage, and construct a new two-story, single-family residence on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot area and lot width in the R1U Single Family Urban Residential Zoning District. The proposal includes a request for excavation within the required side and rear setback areas for retaining walls. The proposal also includes a request for fences and walls exceeding height limits. The proposal includes an attached accessory dwelling unit, ADU, which is a permitted use and not subject to discretionary review. Determine this action is categorically exempt under SEQA guidelines, Section 15303's Class 3 exemption for new construction or conversion of small structures. Mr. Chan?
Thank you, Chair Doe. Following publication of the staff report, there was received one item of correspondence. That correspondence was directly transmitted to you today via email from the property owners at 745 Stanford. The 745 Stanford property owners raised two different concerns, and I'd like to just take a moment to highlight them, as staff did respond directly to these property owners following receipt. So with regard to the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning units, or the HVAC units proposed near the shared property line, the city does have an effect and does enforce the city's noise ordinance, which these proposed HVAC units would need to be in compliance. That compliance would be ensured through the building permit application review process. The second item of concern raised was regarding the proximity of the construction of the rebuilt retaining walls near the shared property line. And again, these construction measures would be thoroughly reviewed and vetted through the construction review application process. And that concludes our presentation. If there's any questions, staff remains available for comments or questions. The applicant team, including the project designer, is also here and available. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And did the applicant want to make any, a presentation or comments? Sure. Okay. Any clarifying questions for the applicant or for staff? No? Then I will turn it to Mr. Turner to take public comment on this item.
Thank you, Chair Doe. This is for item F3. If you would like to give public comment via Zoom, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen, or star nine if you are participating on the phone. If you have a public comment to give in person, please fill out a comment card, bring it to me. Or if you haven't done so, just grab one and give your public comment, and you can fill it out afterwards. And at the moment, no hands raised online. Does not appear we have any in-person commenters.
Okay, let's just give it a moment. And how about now?
Still no hands online and none in person. Thanks.
Thank you. So we'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission. Would anyone like to start the discussion? Commissioner Riggs.
It gets awfully quiet up here sometimes. I am, I'm all too familiar with projects that require excavation next to a property line. I have to say, by the third such project, under my guidance, I had pretty much come to the conclusion that all engineers will tell you that you can dig the basement with shoring and not affect the, the property next door, and that in each and every case, there will be settlement in the property next door. Now, not all soil conditions are the same, but I would just like to lend some credence to the concern that the neighbor has. So at this point, the project, I don't believe, has a recommendation from the soils engineer, nor do I have an idea what the retaining wall construction will consist of. For example, one can excavate 25% of the retaining wall going down, say, every 10 feet, and underpin the retaining wall before building on top of it or before adding to it, such as with a slurry coat. There are ways to address the stabilization of the neighboring soil. I raise this issue now because it's, just because of the likelihood of the issue coming up later. And it's a hassle for everybody if it has to be settled in court. So, so I think at this point, I would just like to caution the applicant and, and I hope urge the city to monitor the question. So that's on that issue. And then I just have a very simple question about the divided light windows, whether they are simulated true divided light, because on the other project, that was clear, and on this one, it's not. So a question through staff, if I may.
Hi, Michael Tom. I'm the architect for the project. They would likely be simulated divided lights. On your issue with the actual retaining wall.
I'm sorry, could I just bring that home? So that means interior and exterior grids and, and the aluminum spacer bars in between the glass?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And then as to your comments regarding the retaining wall, admittedly, if you were to actually look at the existing plans on Sheet A11, there is an existing retaining wall that is being replaced at that site location. So realistically, regardless of earthwork, there is already a failing retaining wall on site. So at owner and applicant is looking to try and, A, ameliorate the situation and actually improve upon the condition. So we do acknowledge the neighbor's concerns, and owner has been in contact with them. But it, and, but existently, the existing, sorry, the existing condition is already such that, that amelioration is going to be required.
I understand, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate the owner's efforts here, the applicant's efforts. I'll just draw the parallel. If you have a serious crack in a purlin supporting your second-floor structure, and you come in to replace it, it's really all about the shoring, because you don't take the purlin out first. Whereas in grading, it's all too common that the backhoe will come in and demolish the retaining wall. And from that moment on, the soil is not being retained. Additionally, depending on the type of construction chosen for the new retaining wall, if it is overexcavated for formwork, there's definitely no support. So the details of that construction can all pass for review by the building department, because their concern is that the retaining wall be built successfully, and thereafter, it retains the soil. Their responsibility for review does not have to do with the settlement of the neighbor's soil. But having said that, and I know from your training, you understand the elements involved. I don't intend to make that a condition of an approval. I just want to make sure that it's, it's brought out.
That the means and methods will be a sensitive topic throughout construction. Understood.
Yeah. I mean, it, it may only be, say, a brick walkway that runs along their property line fence, but if it fails, somebody has to rebuild it.
Yeah, understood.
All right. Thank you, and I appreciate your answers.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs and the applicant for thoroughly bringing to light the importance of being careful with the excavation, and that's much appreciated. Any other commissioner comments?
Vice Chair Schindler.
Thank you, Chair Doe. I don't have any further questions or concerns about this particular item. And hearing none from fellow commissioners, I'm prepared to make a first, make a motion to grant the use permit as specified in staff resolution.
Thank you, Vice Chair Schindler. Aside from the issue of excavation and the neighbor's concerns, which was thoroughly covered by the applicant and Commissioner Riggs, I also have no other questions. And appreciate staff also clarifying that the HVAC equipment would just have to comply to the noise ordinance. There would not be a situation where an exception would be made for ladder equipment. So I appreciate that update from the beginning. Would anyone like, Commissioner Eric?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Eric. Commissioner Riggs.
I just, through the chair, wanted to ask staff. It wasn't very easy to find the address of this project on the cover sheet of the staff report. And I think that would be helpful for, shall we say, for the record. We want to allow for particularly people who are not planners or architects to be able to pull a staff report on a project and, and readily see what project they're looking at. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs, for pointing that out. That is a typical, usually it's there, but you're right, rereading it. All right. So a first from Vice Chair Schindler, a second from Commissioner Eric. If there's no further discussion, we'll go ahead and vote on this item. Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schindler?
Yes. I am also a yes. That's five yeses and one absent, and the motion passes.
All right. This is a natural time for a break, but if you want to, I'm just looking at my fellow commissioners. If you would like to just carry on and get through, yeah, we're making good time. All right. All right. F4. General Plan Amendment: City of Menlo Park Housing Element Update Project. Consider and make a recommendation to the city council to amend the 2023-2031 Sixth Cycle Housing Element, or Housing Element, adopted January 31, 2023. Since the adoption date, the housing element was revised to address comments from the California Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, including changes in the following topic areas: racial/ethnic areas of concentration of affluents, RCAAs; disproportionate housing needs, including displacement; contributing factors to fair housing issues; progress in meeting the regional housing needs allocation arena; development of small and large sites; suitability of non-vacant sites; city-owned sites; federally owned and school sites; environmental constraints; the electronic sites inventory; zoning for a variety of housing types; emergency shelters; land use controls; density bonuses; fees and exactions; local processing and permit procedures; constraints on housing for persons with disabilities; shortfall of adequate sites; actions, programs, metrics, milestones, unspecified, specific quantified objectives. The housing element was most recently submitted for HCD review on November 3, 2023, following a seven-day public review period, and HCD indicated that the revisions are in substantial compliance with state law pending adoption of the revised housing element by city council and certification by HCD. Determine this action is covered by the subsequent environmental impact report, SEIR, prepared for the Housing Element Update Project, State Clearinghouse Number 1990030530, and none of the circumstances requiring a supplemental EIR or subsequent EIR exist. SEQA Guidelines, Section 15162. We're returning, Mr., there you go, Mr. Smith.
Good evening, Chair Doe and planning commissioners. I do have a presentation for you this evening. All right. So the city council adopted the housing element on January 31 of 2023. And for some background, the housing element is a plan for the city's housing needs for the eight-year period from 2023 to 2031. And the city's regional housing needs allocation, which we call RENA for short, is nearly 3,000 units through the 2031 end date. Following adoption of the housing element, the California Department of Housing and Community Development, which we call HCD, requested revisions in April and August of 2023, and the city council authorized staff to make revisions and transmit them to HCD following review. In December of last year, HCD indicated that with two additional minor revisions, the housing element would be substantially compliant with housing element law. Subsequently, or prior to that, actually, the city council adopted zoning-related amendments to implement the adopted housing element programs in November and December of last year. And the revised housing element before you this evening is consistent with the zoning-related amendments that the council adopted late last year. Attachment F of the staff report provides an extensive list of changes that have been made since the January 31 adoption. Just to highlight a few examples briefly of significant changes, the mid-cycle review program, H1H, was expanded to incorporate development of approved and pending housing developments, use of the Affordable Housing Overlay, which we call the AHO, any remaining governmental constraints to housing development, and other potential measures to track progress in meeting the city's goals. City-owned Parking Lots Program, H4G, was updated to grant additional merit to proposals that address the city's most difficult-to-achieve housing priorities. And so, for example, that could be extremely and very low-income units, preferences for people with special needs, and other much-needed housing types. Program H4J was updated to increase residential densities in the R3 and R4 districts. There was an increase in lot coverage to greater than 50% for the R3 and R4 zoning districts, and that was actually already implemented through the zoning amendments that council adopted late last year. Program H4U was added to facilitate development on federally owned and school sites such as the USGS, Veterans Administration, Veterans Affairs, and the Ravenswood School District sites. And that would be through facilitating outreach, coordination with property owners, consideration of incentives to encourage development on those sites, and so on. And then one other program that I would highlight is Program H5J, which was added to the housing element to highlight preparation of the general plan, environmental justice element, the use of the Community Amenities Fund towards implementing the environmental justice element, and a commitment to implement at least one environmental justice element program each year. Most recent final series of changes requested by HCD in December of last year were fairly minor clarifications to the wording of a couple of programs. And so with that, following the recommendation from the planning commission, the housing commission will review the housing element and make a recommendation at its special meeting next Thursday, January 18. And then following the housing commission meeting, the city council will consider the recommendations of the planning commission and housing commission and take action on January 23. After the housing element amendments are adopted by the city council, HCD will take action to certify the housing element. And in addition to the housing element, staff is continuing to work on the environmental justice and safety elements, and we intend to return to the planning commission in the coming months for further discussion on those elements of the general plan. And so, as always, staff will continue to provide updates on the housing, environmental justice, and safety elements on the city webpage at menlopark.gov/housingelement. With that, I will return it to you, Chair Doe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any clarifying questions for Mr. Smith before we take public comment? Commissioner Eric?
I do have one clarifying comment. So I understand from the staff report that the staff report, as well as I take it, the presentation from Mr. Smith focuses on changes made to the housing element since January 2023. We have discussed those changes a lot in this commission since then. And from reading attachment F, my understanding is since we last discussed this in August, that there have been only, it looks like, two changes based on the feedback we, the city received from HCD. Those two changes do not look as substantial as a lot of the other ones. So I just want to confirm that what we're being asked to recommend tonight is substantially the same thing as we recommended to advance to the city council on November 6.
Yes, generally, the document will be very much in line with what you had previously seen with the couple of minor changes that you mentioned, Commissioner Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Chair Doe, if we can just clarify, and Mr. Smith, please correct me if I'm wrong. I know that the city council had two check-ins on the revisions to the housing element, which are separate and apart from the changes to the zoning, which were considered by the planning commission and on which the planning commission made a recommendation. I'm sure the commission's been in the loop, you know, as changes to the housing element have been posted to the city's website. But I just wanted to clarify that we haven't not, I don't believe we've actually brought an item forward to the commission with the specific revisions since January 31 of 2023. And that's why you have a comprehensive kind of discussion in your staff report. But I'm sure, you know, the commission's been following along with those changes. And I'd ask Mr. Smith or Ms. Chow to correct me if that's not accurate.
Thank you for that clarification. I think it's an important distinction. But yes, I think, as you said, we've been following along. Does that answer your question still, Commissioner Eric?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. If there's no further clarifying questions, let's go ahead and open public comment on this item. Mr. Turner?
Thank you, Chair Doe. This is item F4. Once again, please click the raise hand button if you are online and would like to give public comment or star nine. If you're participating on the phone, if you are participating in person, please fill out a comment card. And I do have one online participant. So Jenny Michelle, you should be able to unmute yourself now, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Dear Chair, Vice Chairs, Commissioners, Staff, Neighbors, Members of the Public, I'm Jenny Michelle from the Coleman Place Neighborhood Block in D3. Happy New Year, Year of the Electric Train. Personal comments: I'm voicing my support for item F4. Wowzers! Congratulations on the approval by the state subject to our adoption. There were many years, thousands of residents, tens of thousands of labor hours that brought about this moment in time. I'm still pinching myself. Thank you all. This is what it feels like to celebrate a win, and you know me, I'm colorful. Our deaf and hard-of-hearing disabled son would like to be able to live here in about 10 years when he comes of age. If he was to be making minimum wage or wages for entry-level positions, he would need to have full-time jobs in addition to going to school. I was never able to finish my degree with those same conditions and ended up homeless. How would he expect anything to be different 30 years later, right? I'm also a licensed real estate agent, and have an obligation to warn or flag that market conditions, supply chain constraints, acts of God like the earthquake, volatile social dynamics, yield concerns are all cooling off scaled or more than one unit housing developments in the area. We would be wise to read these waters and take actions to further fostering housing of all types for all stages of life throughout the city or in all districts save for D1. We cannot fail our housing element obligations. We're such a wonderful case study municipality because every, around every block or every other block, I can see evidence of single-family residence construction on this west side of 101. Fascinating. So there's a cool, cooling off in one aspect of the marketplace and not in another. The latter has been steadily robust around here for decades. I know firsthand. I recommend advising the city council to issue a new SEIR for the current housing element to incorporate the new housing laws signed by the governor in 2023, including tenant protections. Secondly, let's work with our various local real estate brokerages to incorporate those laws into disclosures for the municipality, essentially advising sellers and buyers of these laws. The driver is to inform the stakeholders of the highest and best use of parcels is no longer one-family home model, thereby increasing SB9 projects and utilizing new laws. I appreciate your consideration and thank you for your service.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you, Ms. Michelle. At the moment, I do not have any additional hands raised and did not receive any comment cards.
Okay, if it's okay with you, I might just wait a few more moments for this topic. And how about now?
No additional comment, there's.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions, discussion. And our action, requested action tonight is to make a recommendation to the city council. Would anyone like to start? Vice Chair Schindler?
Thank you, Chair Doe. Back when, in November and December, when we were discussing the modifications to the zoning code in support of the housing element, I think we had many opportunities to celebrate the hard work that the community, staff, and to some extent, this commission, and of course, city council, did in support of getting through this process and getting to a fantastic set of outcomes. The programs, the report, the programs, the policies, and everything that is in the housing element has sort of given us a strong foundation. And now that we've got the report, we've got the approval from the state, it's exciting to move forward and actually move into execution and implementation mode. I'm very excited to see what we can do as a community and as a city, and look forward to realizing all of the goals that are captured in the housing element, or realizing the goals through the programs. I have nothing further to add in terms of commentary or question. I think the document, the housing element, with the small modifications in response to the December HCD letter, stands on its own. And I'm happy to make a motion to make a recommendation to city council to adopt this final version of the housing element.
Thank you, Vice Chair Schindler. I'm sorry, Commissioner Eric, go ahead.
As usual, very well said, and it's hard to say it better than Commissioner Schindler. I am also incredibly excited and would like to congratulate staff and everyone who worked so hard on this. And I am happy to second the motion.
Thank you. A first from Vice Chair Schindler, a second from Commissioner Eric. I think we're all smiling up here. So thank you to staff and the community for all your hard work. I just had one question to staff, maybe to Mr. Smith. There was just a mention of the environmental justice element, and I just am curious, maybe for the public's awareness, when you think that might be brought back for discussion?
Yeah, I think tentatively, we're looking to bring something back in the first quarter of this year. So hopefully, within the next two to three-ish months, we'd like to be back before the commission to discuss that further.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Smith. All right. Look over here. If any, no further questions or discussion, then let's go ahead and vote. And this is to make a recommendation to the city council to amend the 2023-2031 Sixth Cycle Housing Element that was adopted January 31 of last year. Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrak?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schindler? Yes, I am also a yes. That's five yeses, one absent, and the motion passes.
Apologies. I would like to, sorry, I know we're rolling, like to request a three-minute or five-minute recess if we can.
I think we, yes, let's do that. The time is 8:46. Let's take a short break and come back around 8:51 or so. around eight fifty-one or so. Okay, welcome back. Go ahead and get started with F5. General Plan Land Use Map Amendment and Resonings City of Menlo Park Housing Element Update Project. The city of Menlo Park is proposing to amend the general plan land use map and zoning map to create consistent zoning for the parcel at 512 Durham Street and a portion of the parcel at 687 Bay Road and consistency with recently adopted amendments to implement zoning related programs in the adopted 2023, 2031 six cycle housing element general plan. The proposed changes are intended to assist in providing capacity to meet the city's regional housing needs allocation arena of 2,946 dwelling units and are generally summarized below. General Plan Land Use Map. Amendment to change the land use designation for assessors parcel number APN zero six two two zero five one seven zero five one, this is five one two Durham Avenue from residential low density to retail commercial. The parcel is currently utilized for circulation and parking as part of a non-residential development at eight one two Willow Road. Zoned CMU neighborhood mixed use. Zoning map amendment to rezone APN zero six two two zero five one seven zero from R1U, single family urban residential to CMU neighborhood mixed use to locate the development at eight one two Willow Road within a single zoning district allowing mixed uses. And amendment to rezone a portion of the split zoned parcel at 687 Bay Road from R1U to CMU. So that the entire parcel is within the CMU zoning district which allows mixed use. Determine this action is covered by the subsequent environmental impact report SEIR prepared for the housing element update project. State clearinghouse number one nine nine zero zero three zero five three zero. And none of the circumstances requiring a supplemental EIR or subsequent EIR exist. Sequa guideline section one five one six two. Mr. Smith, do you have a presentation for us?
Yes, good evening again, Chair Doe and planning commissioners. I do have a presentation for this item as well. And while I'm pulling that up, I will note that we received, I believe, two items of correspondence in opposition to the requested amendments at 687 Bay Road. So I won't go into the background too much since the previous presentation pretty much gave this background, but the housing element was adopted January 31st of last year. And it does include program, programs to implement certain zoning changes. Those zoning changes were adopted by city council on November 28th and December 5th of last year. And among those changes was the implementation of program H4I of the housing element, which is create new opportunities for mixed use development. And one way to do that was through the creation of a new neighborhood mixed use which is designated CMU zoning district. And that zoning district combined a number of existing commercial and mixed use districts into a single district to help streamline the zoning ordinance and administration of the development process on these sites throughout the community. There are two parcels at 687 Bay Road and five one two Durham Street that are part of developments that were rezoned partially to CMU as part of last year's actions. And the remainder of each of those sites retained the existing R1U, single family zoning and are currently used as parking lots. Neither of these sites, neither of these parcels is included in the housing element sites inventory. And staff is not aware of any redevelopment proposals for either of the parcels at this time. The first parcel that I'll discuss is eight seven, 687 Bay Road. This map shows the former zoning districts that were combined into the new CMU district. The parcels in the district are primarily small sites. They're typically adjacent to single family residential neighborhoods. Mainly located along the Willow Road corridor, but they also include parcels along Burgess Drive, adjacent to the Burgess Park campus. A cluster of parcels at Gilbert and Manalto, and then a few other scattered sites like the, the subject parcel on Bay Road. The CMU zoning amendments adopted by council on December 5th included a portion of 687 Bay Road, which is shown on this in map inset under its former C2A zoning. Zooming in a little bit, this map shows the entire parcel with a little more context. Just prior to adoption of the zoning amendments last year, staff identified that the parcel has split zoning with the dark red portion being zoned CMU and the lighter green portion remaining R1U, the single family urban residential zoning. The existing development at eight, at 687 Bay Road includes an office building on the darker red portion of the site. In the parking lot on the lighter green portion of the site. And the parcel at 695 Bay Road at the corner with Hollyburn Avenue includes a school and the school and office both utilize the parking on the light green portion of the 687 Bay Road site. Based on staff research, it appears that the light green area that's zoned R1U has been used as a parking lot for this development since the 1960s. Both 687 Bay Road and 695 Bay Road are under one ownership. And the entire 687 parcel, so that's outlined in, in the blue line has a general plan land use designation for retail and commercial. However, because no parcels in the R1U zoning district were identified in the notices for the rezoning to CMU. The portion of the site that was previously C2A, the dark red portion was rezoned CMU and the R1U portion of the site remained R1U. If adopted by city council, the CMU zoning would be applied to the entire 687 Bay Road parcel as shown in the updated map here. And the CMU zoning would allow up to six additional units on the site if it were to redeveloped with multifamily housing. So as I stated earlier, we, we don't know of any potential redevelopment of this site at this time. But depending on the scope of a future development of the site, it could include commercial only development or mixed use development that would incorporate residential and non-residential uses. The second parcel at 512 Durham Street is shown in yellow on the map inset. And this is the same map that I discussed earlier on, same related to 687 Bay Road. So these are all the parcels that were rezoned CMU. Five twelve Durham Street is part of the El Rancho Market Development at eight twelve Willow Road, which is zoned CMU. And the parcel is used to provide circulation and parking for the market and has been used as a parking lot for the site since the 1950s. It has a general plan land use designation of low density residential and it has R1U zoning, so single family residential zoning as well. The eight twelve Willow and five twelve Durham parcels are under one ownership. And if adopted by city council, the general plan land use designation for the site would change from low density residential to retail commercial as shown on this updated map. And the zoning for the site would change from R1U to CMU as shown in the updated map here. The CMU zoning would allow for up to five additional units to be developed on the site if it were to redevelop with multifamily housing. As with the 687 Bay Road parcel, depending on the scope of a future redevelopment, it could include commercial only development or mixed use development that would incorporate residential and non-residential uses. Staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend the proposed zoning related amendments to city council. The proposed changes would align the general plan land use designation and the zoning for the sites with their existing developments that have been in place for a number of decades. The sites would continue to be allowed to operate as is under their existing use permits for long as the, for as long as the current developments remain in place. And potential barriers or constraints to redevelopment of the sites would be reduced by streamlining the zoning to provide a consistent zoning designation across those sites. And redevelopment of the sites with multifamily housing or non-residential uses would continue to require an architectural control permit so that the community could provide input and the commission could evaluate the design of any future project. The combined rezonings would create opportunities for up to 11 more housing units and or some neighborhood serving retail uses to help the city meet its regional housing needs allocation and maintain vitality throughout the community. And looking ahead for next steps, on February 13th, there will be tentative city council meeting to review the recommendation from the planning commission. Action on a general plan amendment would be effective immediately. And then action on the rezonings would require a second meeting, which would tentatively be February 27th. And then if adopted, the effective date for the rezonings would be March 28th. And with that concluded my presentation and I will return it back to you, Chair Doe.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any questions for Mr. Smith before public comment? Commissioner Riggs?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Smith. I guess I really just have one question. In what way did the planning division survey the adjacent homeowners regarding both five twelve Durham and 687 Bay Road to see whether they supported the change from R1U?
So there were notices that were sent out to property owners within 300 feet of the, the subject parcels. So that was one way that outreach was done as well as a notice in the, the local newspaper.
Okay, but knowing what parcels are adjacent and who owned them and their phone numbers and their emails. Did the planning division go to the neighbors and ask them if they supported this change from R1U to CMU?
We didn't have like a neighborhood meeting or that, that type of outreach. Really, the, the idea behind it was simply to make the zoning for the sites consistent with the, the types of uses that have already existed there for decades. So that outreach had, in, in short, to answer your question, we didn't provide specific parcel by parcel outreach, aside from the noticing.
And when you refer to the ongoing use, uses for decades, is that the same as what your, would allow under CMU? Parking? Or in fact, would CMU not allow for a multi-story construction?
So CMU would allow for a different range of potential uses on the site. That is, that is accurate to say. It couldn't involve additional construction, obviously not a a surface parking lot, but potentially multi-story buildings.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. Any other clarifying questions? No. Vice Chair Schindler?
Thank you, Chair Doe. Mr. Smith, just for broader awareness within the community, could you, could you just give, give us the details about how parcels that are zoned for single family can come to have parking lots on them? And well, let's, let's just do that as the first part.
Sure, there's a provision in the zoning ordinance that allows for residentially zoned land adjacent to commercial uses to apply for a use permit in order to park, to have parking on that parcel.
Thank you. And a combination of that with, I think Commissioner Riggs' comment. Under CMU, the new newly reconstructed parameters for CMU, would parking be an allowed use? And how would that work?
So I believe i- if you're thinking in terms of a complete redevelopment of the site, then parking would not be among the permitted or conditional uses that would be allowed on the site. For any, for the existing development on the sites, that could certainly remain in place and would be covered essentially as sort of under non-conforming clauses that were adopted late last year as part of the, the rezoning. So existing uses could continue with the, the surface parking. But I think the idea behind the proposed rezoning is really to encourage the development of those parcels for something more than, than surface parking for automobiles.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Schindler. Mr. Turner, if we could go ahead and open public comment and could we maybe get an estimate on how many commenters we have?
Yes, at the moment, I have seven comment cards in person. I'll go ahead and announce if you would like to give public comment and you are online, please click that raise hand button at the bottom of your screen or star nine if you are on the phone. Maybe give a second for those to trickle in, but at the moment, seven in-person commenters. Might start with those to give the folks online an opportunity to raise their hand if they want to.
Sure, I just want to kind of get idea of like, do we have lots of people or do you have any idea of how many online commenters we have or is it?
Still none at the moment.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead and proceed with the in-person comments, please.
Would you like to continue with the standard three minutes in that case?
Yeah.
All right, so please forgive me with some of the pronunciations of names, but we'll start with Ajay Bish. Give me one second to turn on your microphone. And you'll have three minutes to speak once. Okay, there we go.
Can you hear me now? Okay, cool. So I'm a resident of Windermere Avenue, so I am diametrically opposite to six eight seven Bay Road. And this notice was really concerning to me based on my understanding of the rules and what is allowed with C M U. So I think generally this will have a very negative impact on the neighborhood. That's my feeling. The biggest concerns that I have are, right now, the traffic on Bay Road in that area is actually quite bad. And it's, it's pretty unsafe for our children to, and cyclists around, you know, riding around there. If these zoning changes come into effect, my concern is that it will have a different incentive for the owners of these parcels. So if they want to land up building lots of units, my understanding was that six eight seven, six nine five, all of that was a single owner, right? And we could have up to twenty four new units, was my understanding. I might be wrong, it might be eighteen or twenty four. And I I think it will wreck havoc in terms of parking and traffic. And in the increased traffic on Windermere and Hollyburn, I feel it will make the place very unlivable and unsafe for our kids. The second thing is that, you know, if the owner of that parcel chooses not to touch the Montessori school and and just develops the parking lot, I think that will make parking even worse. So that's also not a great idea. Apart from that, I had some very general concerns around privacy. If multi-story is again allowed in that lot, right? If 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 the owner or the developer can put up, you know, a lot of units there, it will block sunlight, you know, and there would be privacy concerns which are shared by all the neighbors. And I also think that in terms of construction noise and, you know, it looks like this is going to be a major, could be a potential major development that can happen there in future, that would again make the whole place very unlivable for all the neighbors. And I have a young kid and, you know, I'm, you know, I I think it would kind of force us to move out of that place because we're already, you know, having a lot of noise from one oh one and from Bay Road. And if there's any construction or that sort of a thing on a major scale that happens right next to us, it would make it really, really hard to stay there. So I think that pretty much summarizes my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Excuse me. Our next speaker will be Vera Eb. Yes, please state your name if you could for clarification.
It's Vera. Chairperson though, planning commission, other planning commissioners, good evening. My name is Vera. We live right next to the parking lot, which is part of six eighty seven that that is being constructed for rezoning. Right now, I think as you said, this parking lot is like R one U, which allows only surface parking on the unit. We are very concerned that if this zoning changes on this unit, if this does become C M U. For us, most of the sunlight does come from the parking lot direction. This is at the south of my property line. And if you, if you are allowing a multi, I mean, potentially a multi-unit, multi-story building in that complex, it might, it might block sunlight and also create privacy issues for us. The other primary concern for us is, as Ajay was mentioning, potential increase in the traffic that would result from the rezoning. Right now, the streets are pretty quiet, safe, they're primarily residential. We do have a, we do have a Montessori, but the traffic from the Montessori is not high. Any increase in traffic could significantly alter the environment, raising safety concerns and noise levels. Our streets are, if you look at the streets, are relatively narrow. They might not be equipped to deal with the traffic surge that might come from potential rezoning of the unit. I already mentioned the sunlight concern. I'd also like to highlight that the, I'm not sure the current infrastructure capacity that that particular unit might have can support a potential C M U rezoning. If you look at the lot, this is the only lot that you have in the Flood Park neighborhood, which is zoned slightly differently. Pretty much every other property in that area is an R one U. And this, this specific lot that we have is a commercial lot with a parking lot behind that. So we're also concerned if it actually have other, other issues like, I don't know, like I'm just traffic flow, parking, sewage, water management, waste management and overall utility demands. I do appreciate the city effort to sort of like implement housing element. But I think this specific property is, is part of our neighborhood, which is, which is not a right pick for conversion. I strongly appeal to the commission to consider these points carefully. We believe in maintaining the current zoning in the, is crucial for preserving the character and livability of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Altov Corry.
Hello, thank you for your time today. Just wanted to say my name is Altov. I live at ten ten Hollyburn. My house faces directly to the parking lot. I'm opposed to the rezoning of the parking lot from R one U to C M U. I think there's a couple of reasons for that. Primarily, I think first, when I had a chance to meet with Chris at the planning division to get a little bit more information on, you know, why the rezoning was happening, he and what was possible, he said it is actually possible to build a three-story building on that lot. So I would be directly facing a three-story building, which I was shocked to hear because if you go to Flood Park and you drive around, you don't see three-story buildings. And so I was really surprised that changing the zoning of this particular lot would enable something like that to happen. I understand that Bay Road is a relatively busy road. That intersection actually faces the back entrance to the V A. There is an entrance to the V A over there, so we do get a lot of traffic already. There's a few bus stops in that area as well. So in general, I'm very supportive of the concept of the rezoning. There's a lot of rezoning being done. My wife is a public school teacher. We are supportive of the housing that is being built within Flood Park. We are supportive of the housing that is, the rezoning that is being done on Willow, on Marsh, on Middlefield, on Sand Hill, along El Camino, along Santa Cruz. Those are all areas where it makes a lot of sense to rezone and to add housing. This particular unit, which is on a very residential street, doesn't really make sense. So I don't feel like this aligns and conforms with sort of the very residential feel of the Flood Park, suburban park, Laura Lay neighborhoods that I'm sure you're all very familiar with. I will say that the other thing that I'm concerned about is something that Mr. Riggs referred to is the the notification. I didn't feel it was sufficient. I I really actually was pretty dismayed by how it was done. The, the way the notification came out was in the middle of Christmas when a lot of my neighbors were traveling. I, when you look at the notification, it mentions Bay Road, that doesn't really register. The, because we live on Hollyburn, we live on a Windermere, Bay Road is a very long road. I happened to be sitting in front of my computer. And when I saw the notice and I saw Bay, I just went onto Google Maps and said, oh, my God, this is right in front of my house, this parking lot. Even though it says Bay Road, it would have been much better if the notice said Hollyburn, Windermere, the actual locations that were going to get impacted. So I think there was not enough sufficient time. And I was actually really surprised again to hear that there was only two correspondents because I can, I know of six people firsthand that I've spoken with who have emailed. So I'm not sure where the disconnect is here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Susan Gibson, followed by Nick Darwold.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to share. My name is Susan Gibson. I live at one zero zero four Windermere Avenue. Two sides of my house are adjoining the area that we're talking about. My backyard backs up to the parking lot. This is a residential area. It's a quiet area. I have lived there for twenty seven years. And we have kids and pets. And this is not a good place to increase traffic flow and have a high-density population area. We already have traffic issues. Bay area gets very congested going out onto Willow. So I'm concerned about parking, I'm concerned about traffic, and I'm concerned about privacy. Again, with two sides of my house that could potentially have, as previous folks have stated, sunlight issues, privacy issues from buildings that occur there. So my husband and I are strongly opposed to this rezoning. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Nick Darwold, followed by Kusagra Sherry Baston.
Good evening. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to to address you. I think my neighbors have articulated it pretty well, but I would also state that I'm opposed to the proposal of the rezoning. I've lived in the neighborhood. My name's Nick Eldarwala. I lived at ten twenty seven Windermere, a little bit further down from my neighbors. So I don't have some of the same concerns around sunlight. But the primary concerns I have, which is a consistent theme, which you've heard is around the safety. I have two young kids that live in that neighborhood. They ride their bikes all the time. If you've ever been there in the morning at high peak traffic times, as one of my neighbors stated, it's a pretty busy hectic intersection. And what I've learned about what could be proposed there is incredibly concerning, especially with the density of what the units could, could have in that area. It's kitty corner to the V A's back entrance, as someone already, one of my neighbors already stated. And I think just the increased traffic in the, in the, at peak times in particular would be a nightmare for anyone that lives in that area. The streets are very narrow, so if there was no parking that's currently sort of even proposed, even if this was to go through, would be really, really concerning. But similar to Mr. Riggs there earlier, I think what I was really concerned with was just my neighbor happened to stop by and that was the only way I got notified that this was going to take place. So I was pretty appalled that I wasn't, or anyone in that neighborhood that was affected by it was was contacted. And I think in future, if you are considering doing this in the future, it'd be great to just be a good neighbor and find out if this, these changes are going to take place. But safety and privacy, probably the primary concerns I have with the amount of people that would now, in that small density of area, if you actually go and visit there and see it, put eyeballs on the site, you'll see how much of a problem would be for anyone that's living in that neighborhood. But I think my neighbors articulated most of the the situation pretty well, and I align with a lot of the opposition. So just for the record, I oppose what you are proposing there for the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. Our next speech speaker will be Kusagra Shrebaston, followed by Joe Wifels.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Kusagra. I live right across the street on seven zero three Bay. I oppose the motion and completely in alignment with the concerns that all of my neighbors shared. The biggest one being traffic. I drive very early to work at around eight AM and it takes me about three minutes to cover a distance about less than quarter of a mile, which is from my house just to the Willow Road. And if the neighborhood becomes high-density, it's going to be worse. Sunlight, privacy and noise are some of the other concern. But one thing that that hits me more above all is that the, the area that we live in, the closest public park to our house is Flood Park, which is about a mile and a half away. It takes about sixteen minutes for me and my kid to walk there. The second park that is available next to and in our neighborhood is on Willow Road, which is very busy and unsafe for kids to walk. That parking lot, believe it or not, is where my kids learned how to bike. Even though it is zoned residential and it is used for current Montessori school, in the evening, it becomes a small little playground where neighborhood kids gather and play. There is no other public park that is close to our homes that will allow kids to do that. And if there is a greater neighborhood density, parking and safety concerns are going to become more and more prominent. Again, thank you for staying up late at night. This is my first city hall hearing. I really appreciate you guys for giving your time to serve the community and thank you for considering our motion.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Joe Wifels. And I will ask for final call for online commenters. If you would like to give public comment on this item, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen.
Hi, as the owner of the business at six eight seven Bay Road, today was the, was the day I got the notification that this was even happening. I don't understand why we're rezoning a school. I've been functioning at six nine five Bay Road and six eight seven Bay Road for over ten years. And I find out today that I'm being rezoned, which is going to cause the property value to go up, which should make it more tempting for the owner to try to sell the property and redevelop it when we're the only school in the neighborhood. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. I did not have any online commenters and that was our final comment card.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. I think people online had plenty of time to decide. Thank you for everyone's comments. Let's go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion. And ultimately, the action requested of us is a recommendation to the city council. Would anyone like to start? Commissioner Eric?
Thank you. I'd just like to start with a couple of maybe background questions for staff. My first question, I guess, where to start is that the two parcels that immediately front Bay Road, not the parking lot, those have been included in prior housing element, prior zoning discussions. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and not to rehash all of those discussions, but I know those two parcels were part of a larger program within the city to rezone some parcels to be, to be C M U and were identified, I assume, according to some themes of, you know, these are parcels that would be good for this type of development. Would you be able to just summarize why those particular two parcels fell in that category?
Sure. So they, they previously were within, like you said, there's a certain number of parcels throughout the city that were previously under, I think, five, maybe six or seven different zoning districts. And they were all generally smaller parcels with commercial development, non-residential development on those parcels. And they all had differing zoning regulations that applied to them as part of the effort for the housing element to encourage more opportunities through, for housing throughout the community and to come up with a way to provide opportunities for mixed use, especially where you can combine non-residential and residential uses on a single site so that someone may live above a store or an office or, you know, somewhere where they could easily go to to get something or go to work. Those were the ideas behind these, that group of rezonings to C M U. Those particular parcels at six eight seven and six nine five Bay Road were, were part of that rezoning and they were previously under the C two A zoning district, which was called Neighborhood Shopping Restrictive Zoning District. So the uses that are allowed and that were allowed into the previous C two A zoning district are all very similar to what's allowed under the new C M U zoning district that that governs the site. I would say a private school, so in the case of the the Montessori school. I would say a private school, so in the case of the Montessori school, that would be permitted under a use permit as a special use. And I don't believe under the previous zoning, under the previous zoning, I believe, the same situation would apply as well. So we were careful to try to preserve all of the existing uses of these sites that were rezoned and the opportunities for the uses that are there now to remain in place.
Thank you very much. I think I have one more question, at least for the moment. I know with all of the zoning changes that we were making and were being proposed as part of the housing element process, noticing was a challenge. But my assumption at least would have been that, or my understanding of the situation is that the parking lot parcel was not noticed as part of that, but the other two parcels would have been noticed because they were changing zoning from C2A to CMU. But I would love if staff could confirm or correct my understanding of that.
So the 687 Bay Road parcel, the owner would have received a notice for the entire parcel. It wasn't until after we got very far into the process that we realized that the split zoning was in place for that parcel. But essentially, the notice that was sent out previously would have suggested that the entire thing was going to be changed to CMU zoning. For the 512 Durham Street parcel, that one is a little bit different in that it's its own separate, truly a separate parcel from the remainder of the development that it's part of. And so that parcel was not noticed during any previous noticing that was done for the housing element.
Okay. Thank you. And sorry, just to clarify, so the owner would have received a notice would, you know, traditional noticing of 300 feet around, was that noticing also done with respect to these proposed zoning changes?
Yes, we did a number of different methods of noticing for the previous, the previous group of zoning changes that were done late last year. But it would have gone to, I believe, all the property owners. And I might need assistance from others on the team for that, but I believe we did send it within at least a 300-foot radius of those properties.
Are you able to hear me now?
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Chair Doe, Deanna Chow, Community Development Director. So just to piggyback off of Mr. Smith's comment regarding noticing from the prior zoning effort, so we did notice occupants as well as property owners of the sites and a 300-foot radius.
Thank you. I may have more thoughts later, but that concludes my questions for now.
Thank you, Commissioner Eric. Commissioner Farick.
Thank you, Chair Doe. I have a couple of questions and some thoughts, but I'll just stick with the questions for Just to kind of clarify the response, or what I think the response would be, to one of the concerns around operating current uses on either of these sites that, so if like the office building and school and then the supermarket in the other location were to, if the owner were to want to redevelop just the parking lot but keep the current uses the same, that's actually not possible because those uses still have to be parked. Is that correct? Like, in other words, if they're not going to redevelop the existing uses, they just want to redevelop what is currently being used as parking, those zoned as R1U, those, there would still be a process by which the owner applicant would go through to ensure that the uses of the site are sufficiently parked?
Go ahead and address that. So thank you, Commissioner Farick. So that's assuming if the parcels that we're discussing this evening were to be rezoned to CMU, what would happen if they wanted to keep the current use and redevelop the parking lot site? Is that the question?
Yes. I'm trying to alleviate the concern that there would suddenly be, you know, a five-apartment building on the parking lot and still the other uses. It would still need to be an application that would come through community development, and there would be a process by which the proper parking would be mandatory as part of the site plan.
Yes, because both of the two sites have current, or have existing approved plans. And so a modification to that plan would require a revision to their use permit and a review of their current, or their proposed project. So it would look to see maybe there is an opportunity for shared parking, so it may not be the exact same parking ratio, but it may be a shared parking scenario to address the current use and the new use. And the, for example, I think there were some questions about density. The density would be for the portion of the site that would be used for the areas, if it was just that site, not the entire, not the entires. Or we'd have to look at the entire development together in terms of like what the density would be and what the actual non-residential square footage would be.
Thank you. And then for Mr. Smith, have the owners of the parcels provided any feedback that you're aware of?
To my knowledge, I don't believe we've received any feedback from the owners.
Thank you. And then is this, would, when I first saw it, before I heard comments, when I just was reading the report, it seemed like it was a, like almost like a cleanup or a kind of an effort to make it make sense, the current use of those lots zoned residential to make them, make sense to use as a parking lot for current uses, but also provide potential future mixed-use opportunities, but where there's no current plan to do so. Would that be an accurate kind of representation? I'm not using planning terms, but, you know, it seems like it was trying to just correct sort of a funky thing that it's part of a commercial use, but it's not zoned that way right now.
Right. I think these are two definitely unique sites that we're dealing with here where they have sort of odd configurations, especially the split zoning on the 687 Bay Road parcel with a general plan designation that shows it for retail, commercial, but part of the site is zoned R1U. It's, in our minds, it's a sort of a cleanup to rectify some of those discrepancies there. And we would have ideally included it in the amendments that were done, what, late last year.
Thank you. And I'll just do one quick comment that, just because I was on the commission when the school came for their use permit, and there was all this, there was a lot of concern by the neighbors about parking and traffic, and I'm delighted to hear that it's managed so well and that you're, everybody loves having the school right there. I happen to live on Bay Road, and I go by this, that site every single day, multiple times, so quite familiar with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Farick. Commissioner Riggs.
Thank you. When I saw this project, I made a couple of notes that included, this is R1U, how do the neighbors feel about this change in zoning? And there's mention of cleanup of the zoning and of encouraging vitality of the area. And both of those, I have to say, really stood out. When we look at the zoning map, there's no question that both these R1U lots are part of an R1U neighborhood. They happen to be the first R1U on the street behind the commercial lot, but that applies to cross streets all over Menlo Park, whether it be Allied Arts or the Willows or downtown on both sides of the main strip or on Bay Road. And I guess, as someone once said, you have to draw the line somewhere. I know if I bought the lot to the right of 687 Bay Road, one of the first things I would have done is check with my Realtor, is that parking lot zoned for commercial? No, no, it's R1U. And what's allowed to be built in an R1U? Well, a home of one or two stories and up to 28 feet high and 2,800 square feet. Oh, you mean like all of my other neighbors? Yes. Okay. Then I guess I'll buy this house, because the worst it can be is a parking lot. And the best it could be would be a nice new two-story house. To then be, have it suggested by the city that we've been going through our files and realize that it's not as organized as we'd like it to be, it would be awfully convenient if that R1U lot were commercial, let's just change it. I don't think I'd take that very well if I were the neighbor. In fact, I think I might be seeking legal advice as to just how it is that a city department could simply decide it would be neater bookkeeping if we could change the zoning of that lot. Or conversely, if a planner told me we've decided that the lot next to you that's R1U could help with our need for 3,000 new residences because we could put five or six of them right next to you, I would have to say what I've been hearing for the last couple of years here in this chamber and for much longer throughout the town. Isn't the transportation corridor of Menlo Park a more appropriate place to raise density and put multifamily and mixed use? Then perhaps someone might say, well, wouldn't it be cool if you could rent an apartment above the store? It would be just like Hayes Valley up in San Francisco. But I can't actually remember a neighbor in my neighborhood that came to Menlo Park really wishing they were in Hayes Valley. In fact, kind of the opposite. I've had people buttonhole me and talk for 20 minutes about how they lived in San Francisco. They really loved the city, but oh my God, are they glad that they got out? I, for one, actually always wanted to live above a store, particularly I wanted to be on Fillmore or Union Street, for those who know the city. I like that vitality, but I also realize that's a personal choice. And if I come to a suburban area, that's probably not what I'm looking for, and that's probably not why I went to the trouble to come down here. So all in all, I feel really uncomfortable about being asked to sit in a quasi-judicial position and tell two neighborhoods that we've decided one of their residential lots should be a multi-use, multi-story commercial property. And so from what I've heard tonight, and I've tried to be open to logic from both sides, I have to say the neighbors who are willing to stay up past nine o'clock and sit through four other presentations certainly have, I think, confirmed to me that we're looking at residential neighborhoods, residential owners, and people with residential expectations. And I'm certainly not going to be one in the name of grand planning of the city of Menlo Park to disrupt what they bought into and what they expect. So I will not be able to support making a recommendation of the city council based on this staff report, though I do understand the good intentions and the continuing good intentions of trying to answer our RENA pressures. As a couple of the speakers tonight put it, this is, if I may paraphrase, this is not the right place and not the right fit. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. Vice Chair Schindler.
Thank you, Commissioner Doe. I wanted to just start by sort of where I was when I started to read about this particular project and this proposal. I went back and thought about the work that this commission voted to support for the zoning changes around our housing element, sort of went back and rehashed the simplification and consolidation that we did for, has been mentioned, the five or six-ish different commercial zones that were merged and simplified into CMU. And when I think about what that component of our zoning work was, the paraphrasing in my head is, we wanted to make it easier for parcels that were already commercial to become commercial and residential component of mixed use and denser. So all of the parcels that were part of this component of rezoning, this commission, as it's, as a body, would like to see be mixed use and denser. So personally, I do hope that at some point in the future, the parcels that have already been, or in the process of being rezoned, CMU, the market, the office building, that those can be part of a trend in Menlo Park for greater residential density and mixed-use development. That's my aspiration for those ones that are already being zoned. But that's not what we're talking about tonight. We're talking about the adjacent R1U parcels. And I think there are some solid reasons to adopt the rezoning that's proposed in the staff reports. It is consistent with current use. It is commercial-related parking. It's not residential. It would simplify zoning. The city benefits from having simplified zoning, making it faster and easier for redevelopment on either parcels. But I also, like many of my fellow commissioners have expressed, say, to think that there are a whole lot of solid, there are a number of solid reasons to postpone the rezoning of those two R1U parcels until a later date, when there is a more specific redevelopment proposal on the table, when it is known what would happen on that property. And once that is known, when the community can be engaged in a deeper, more iterative, and more thorough collaborative feedback loop. I went back and tried to think about examples I was aware of where other single, other R1U zoned properties had been, had had their zoning changed. The only one that I was aware of and was made aware of was the Flood Park project. And in this city, that was a very, very, not going to, there was a lot of discussion, there was a lot of debate, there was a lot of conflict, and there was a lot of effort on both sides to sort of make sure that if thorough conversation happened about what was being developed. And out of concern about how the process happened or didn't happen, we had a lot of discussion and fear about the ability to, for, the ability for things to be rezoned without proper process. We had a ballot measure that was proposed in response to that. I would like to ensure- I would like to ensure, with that in our recent rearview mirror, less than two years ago, I would like to be sure that this commission and city council proceeds with as utmost caution and consideration for process, almost erring on the side of sort of being overly rigorous in the volume and quality of community engagement that we have anytime we're going to rezone anything that's single-family. So, for that reason, I will not be able to support the recommendation to city council that is proposed.
Thank you, Vice Chair Schindler. I think Vice Chair Schindler and Commissioner Riggs have explained a lot of their reasoning. I appreciate staff identifying, just maximizing options and opportunities to meet our housing goals. Even five or six units here or there, I think staff said that can help us meet our goals. But for me, what it comes down to, and I think Commissioner Eric was asking some questions about how the parcels that were rezoned to CMU, however they noticed, and we, in the community, over the course of a year, maybe more, there was many opportunities for someone from the community to weigh in on, for instance, those various commercial zones being zoned to CMU. A lot of transparency, no surprises. And, so for me, that's what it comes down to. It's a matter of process, and Vice Chair Schindler mentioned this. I think we all, many of us, I shouldn't say, oh, I mean, I can't speak for everyone, but many of us on this commission, overall, we've supported housing and density over and over again, listening to the housing advocates near downtown, near areas of transit. I'm reminded of a comment from Ms. Michelle on another agenda item this evening about being creative with single-family sites. And I agree with all that, but I think in this case, it's a matter of process. And the rezoning of R1U sites, as far as I understand, was not part of this year-long, community-wide, transparent process. So for me, also, my gut feeling when reading this was mentally, logic makes sense, it's consistent with what is there, but the gut feeling that is confirmed by hearing neighboring residents is also not able to support the recommendation.
Commissioner Eric.
Thank you, Chair Doe. And I really appreciate Vice Chair Schindler's, because I was trying to wrestle with it in my head too, because both things can be true, that we can be supportive of adding more housing and density and mixed use. But the articulation of my fellow commissioners helped kind of understand that pushing in these two very small, you know, therefore the opportunity to like actually gain massive housing here isn't very big. And it's also very after the fact, after all that process. Just the previous agenda item, you know, we just kind of are trying to put the icing on the cake and then kind of add in a couple sites right at the very, 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 very end. So I guess, you know, we know that there will be another housing element update in not distant future. And there will be already two sites that could have a real process and a real discussion with everybody involved to determine if that makes sense. Particularly, the other thing that swayed me is when Mr. Smith shared that there hasn't been any feedback from the owners, so it's not as though we would have a clue what they may or may not ever want to do. So we don't even know if it's a site that has viable opportunity anyway. You know, like it may not even be something they would want, just like a lot of our downtown properties, we wish we could reach them to do something useful with their sites, but instead, they never reply and never do anything with their parcels. And so, you know, sort of the other side of the coin than we heard tonight, but I certainly empathize too, because as Commissioner Riggs said, the line has to be drawn somewhere. And it is, you know, those sites making use, having residential-serving childcare-slash-school-slash-grocery store is really useful for neighborhoods. And so, certainly want to see those uses continue. So, I don't really need to express probably how I'm going to go since three of you have already expressed. I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Commissioner Eric.
Thank you. I realized I had one more clarifying question for staff, which is if these parcels are not rezoned from R1U to CMU, does that impact at all the city's conditional approval of our housing element? In other words, is the conditional approving approval of the housing element somehow conditional on these sites being rezoned because they were grouped in with other parcels?
Thanks for that question, Commissioner Eric. These are not part of our Housing Element Opportunity Sites list. These were part of just the broader program to implement new mixed use opportunities. And so, as a result, we don't need, I would say, we don't need these sites in order to meet our RENA or demonstrate to HCD that we have the capacity to do that. So in short, the answer would be no.
Okay, thank you. That's a relief. In that case, you know, as Chair Doe pointed out, there was a reason that I started my questioning with trying to understand what the process was here. And just to state upfront, I am inclined to agree with my fellow commissioners. However, before we go to a vote, I'm going to use my prerogative as the one on this day as to say a few things. And that is that I have a great deal of respect, in particular, for how this commission values neighbor input. I have a great deal of respect for Commissioner Riggs and how he always brings up conversations that he has with neighbors. I think that's what a city is about. I would like to perhaps put an additional point on some of the things that my other fellow commissioners have brought up around the desire for the city to become more mixed use, to become more dense, to become more diverse, to become more vibrant. And when I hear things like, oh, good, the worst that could happen on this site is that a two-story house is built and not five apartment buildings, the way that I think about it, the way that the neighbors that I talk to think about it would say, oh, well, that's a bummer, because I think the best thing that could be built on that site would be housing that includes more diverse people in the city, would be a store that increases the vibrancy of my neighborhood and makes it a more walkable neighborhood, makes it possible for me and my children to walk somewhere rather than drive somewhere. So, I don't want to let it go by that our assumption is that each one of these vibrant developments for our city is somehow something bad or something worse or something that every neighbor would say, oh, I don't want that here. Because in fact, the neighbors that I know, that I talk to every day, that quite frankly are my age, would say the exact opposite. And I hope that as we move forward to implementing this housing element, we remember that there are people living in this city, in fact, a great many of them, who see the future as that and don't necessarily see it as the only job of the city to preserve single-family housing forever. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Eric. If I may just say, I completely share that sentiment. But this is not about, well, from my perspective, for me, this is not about protecting single-family home zoning, and nothing's wrong with it, but I don't think that's the exercise here. I think the exercise is that it came as a surprise to our community. And I already, basically, you know, there was a 300 notification issued to neighbors within 300-foot radius. But if you go to the rezoning exercise that we've been doing over the course of the year, the entire city was engaged, whether or not they lived within 300 feet of the parcels in question. So that's really what it is about. It's about the civic process. So thank you so much for delineating what this could be about. This is not necessarily saying that the worst-case scenario is density and diversity, and again, not putting words in anyone's mouth that that's what they believe, but appreciate you bringing to light that point that we all have, bring different perspectives and have different visions for our city. And I believe everyone has... Vice Chair Schindler, you look like you're...
All right, since you called me out. I simply want to add on to what Commissioner Doe has said, what Commissioner Eric has just said in terms of the long-term aspirations for the city. I love what Commissioner Eric said about people who live in the city and that some folks are hoping for that density. What also occurred to me when you said that was the people who don't yet live in our city, but it would be awesome if they did. The teachers, the firefighters, the young folks who are graduating from college, people of different backgrounds and income levels. I think folks here are probably, particularly folks in the community who are coming in from the Flood Park neighborhood are very familiar with the proposed development in Flood Park and the necessity of affordable housing for teachers. Well, it's a much broader group than that. So I hope that we can find solutions for people who don't yet live in our city, and we can be welcoming of them. I also think that one of the benefits of going through a very thorough process with the community, with the notifications and the public dialogue and sharing information about development projects that are coming, is that we have a chance to have a really interesting conversation about the things that consistently come up. Traffic, parking, safety, right? I think there is a really large body of work that can be had about what those things, the impact of certain types of development can be on those variables in a city. This commission, for example, has pointed out in a number of cases that traffic can be reduced by having denser, higher-density housing. So, in any case, the point is I support going through a more extensive process, in part because I think it helps address community concerns about, for example, and many of the things that we heard tonight. So, with that, I guess I would make a motion that we vote on the resolution that has been proposed and that is included in the staff report at this time.
Okay, so that's a first from Vice Chair Schindler. And is your first... What is your motion? I guess what I'm trying to understand is...
I'm trying to figure out if we just vote yes. If we vote for the resolution, or we turn it around the other direction.
Yeah, do we take this staff recommendation? And I think I've already indicated how I feel, so vote no. Or is it the recommendation is that we, that we make the recommendation and then vote on the recommendation, if that makes sense?
Let's try to make it as clean as possible. I would like, I would make, I would, I would motion to adapt the resolution as proposed in the staff report. That is the... I'm calling for a motion to vote on the resolution.
If I may.
Please, Commissioner Riggs.
I'd like to, I'd like to vote, if we could.
We're going to vote, I'm sure. Our charge is to, quote, "consider and make a recommendation to the city council on the proposed amendments." It does not say "consider and recommend." It does not say "consider and deny." It says "make a recommendation." And I really have no trouble in making a recommendation not to adopt the two proposed, well, the two, actually, it's more than two, but the collective amendments of the staff report 2405 PC. If the chair pleases, if that makes sense.
Yes, so I, is that, I'm going to consider that a suggested wording for the maker of the motion, if I understood that correctly, Vice Chair.
Great, exactly as Commissioner Riggs said. So a motion to recommend not adopting the proposed resolution, the collective proposed resolutions. Did I get that correct, that paraphrased correctly, Commissioner Riggs?
Yeah, and if I may, Madam Chair, and I appreciate that it's difficult to try and parse out what it is you're being asked to do. But if I understand correctly, you know, the commission's not inclined to adopt the resolution in your packet. Instead, the commission's inclined to make a recommendation to the council that they not adopt the proposed modifications to the zoning ordinance and the land use map. And that would be the recommendation that is, I believe, is on the table for the commission to vote on.
That is indeed the recommendation I would wish I had proposed the first time I said it. Apologies for not understanding. Just looking back at you again, Ms. Wagner, is that acceptable?
I believe staff understands what the direction that the commission is giving, and that is what the government code asks you to do, is to make a recommendation on the proposed modifications to the land use map and the zoning ordinance.
Okay, so to be clear, we are recommending that city council not adopt the resolutions, the collective resolutions that are proposed in the staff report.
And not to put too fine a point on it, but you're recommending that the council not adopt the ordinance?
Yes, thank you, the ordinance.
So you're to not make the changes, not to make the proposed changes to the land use element and map of the general plan and not make the proposed zoning ordinance changes?
So if a member of the commission were in favor of making the ordinance changes, they would vote no in this instance. If a member of the commission were in favor of not making changes to the ordinances, they would vote yes on this issue, on this proposed motion.
Could I, through the chair, offer as a thing for thought for the motion maker? Could we potentially add "at this time"? Because I don't think there's like a hard "we would never." It's just that there hasn't been the process to really feel like we have enough real community engagement to make this determination or this recommendation.
And, sorry, while we're considering that, I was going to ask the maker of the motion for something similar. So I will add on, we're recommending not adopting the ordinance at this time. And I would add something like, comma, "out of a desire for greater process and transparency when considering zoning changes of this nature."
I think I'm comfortable with both modifications. So not adopting the ordinance changes at this time out of desire for more thorough, more extensive and, I'll just say, more extensive process and community engagement. Period. My expectation would be the next time that we see something like this, though, it would not be in the form of this ordinance. But I will let the process run its course, and I would expect that to be part of, that would be the process. I think that is my first on the table. I'm happy to restate if anybody wants it before we get a second.
So...
Commissioner Riggs.
I'm inclined to second, but first, if I may, question of staff. As this is a recommendation to city council, besides the, shall we say, bottom line, where we recommend that council not adopt the proposed amendments, would the council also receive a summary of our action and discussion enough to recognize the three commissioners who asked for more process? In other words, does council get the whole story or just the bottom line?
So typically, in a city council staff report where we're relaying a recommendation from a commission, we would provide maybe a paragraph, some bullet points to give a little bit of context rather than just a straight yes or no recommendation. So we would add in the context around the discussion.
That's what I thought I remembered from working through some of these things similarly in the past. in the past. So I would ask if the maker is willing not to add anything more to our motion, but to let our discussion back up what the details are for our motion.
I also feel hopeful and fairly confident that city council will get both written and verbal feedback from, from staff. And I also feel reasonably confident that, that number of members of the council will do their own sort of, go through their own process, whether it be reading the minutes or watching the video of this meeting, or even engaging with commissioners here just to get more detail. So I'm hopeful and confident that that will hap, fairly confident that that will happen. I'm not sure that putting at this time and out of a desire for more process detracts from anything, so I'm just going to leave it in, I think, for the, with the motion. So the recommendation that city council not adopt the ordinance changes at this time out of a desire for more process as the headline, and then with the one plus paragraphs of additional color from this meeting be shared with them.
Thank you, Vice Chair Schindler, first, and thank you, Commissioner Eric and Farick and Commissioner Riggs for your input on that. May I ask Commissioner Riggs, just why, just to understand your thinking, why you would want to?
Sure. I think actually Commissioner Schindler revealed the thinking that I have, which is that when this comes forward again, the context may be somewhat different. We had a pretty significant representation and it was all one-sided here about this proposal. So staff may not come back with a similar proposal, but with more process. Staff may reconsider what that, those two particular lots should be. And it may be that they are best left as R1U, but they may want to in some other way encourage the adjacent lots to develop. They may also come back and say, well, we've decided this should be CMUX where the back portion of the combined lots, you know, thinking of Bay Road, would be no more than two stories high, similar to what we did with the specific plan. And in order for it to back up to R1U neighborhoods. So I think the additional wording presumes that this will come back in largely the same format, and I'm not sure that it will.
Through the chair, could I? I, I, that's interesting because I agree with that. However, that's exactly why I want that in, because I want some context around that we're not saying never bring it back, we won't ever, we won't ever consider this again. We're saying we, we don't feel comfortable with this recommendation at this time due to process. We might, after a robust process, feel very supportive of this change or whatever iteration, you know, may come in 10 years or the future planning commission that is none of us in 10 years to consider it again. And so I, that's why I just sort of want a little context so there isn't a concern for future, you know, of, well, they must have had some hard reason why they said, no, we cannot make this recommendation.
Well, that's, that's why they look at the minutes. And actually, I don't think there's any risk of city council feeling that they couldn't, frankly, bring back the same thing two years from now. I just don't think that we draw such a hard line, but, you know, to everyone's interpretation.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Riggs and Farick. Let's go ahead and move the motion with the first that we have from Vice Chair Schindler, keeping the at this time and for a desire of more civic engagement and process. And we'll vote on.
I feel compelled to second that.
Yes. Thank you. Looking, looking over here, Commissioner, a second from Commissioner Farick, and let's go ahead and vote on the motion. Commissioner Eric.
Yes.
Commissioner Farick.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs.
Yes.
Vice Chair Schindler.
Yes.
I am also a yes, that's five yeses and one absent, and the motion passes. And thank you to our community members, members who stuck with us until quarter after 10. That brings us to our last item under the public hearing, F6. Architectural control revision and use permit revision for 3723 Haven Avenue. Consider and adopt a revision to a previously approved architectural control and use permit to develop a new 163-room hotel at 3723 Haven Avenue in the OB Office Boning zoning district. The proposed revisions would modify the previously approved modifications to the zoning ordinance requirements for modulations and step-back design standards. The proposed revisions to the previously approved project also involve elimination of one parking level, which reduces the building from eight to seven floors, an overall height increase of six inches, relocation of a rooftop deck from the fourth to third floor resulting in a height decrease of four feet for the deck, an internal reconfiguration of parking spaces to utilize tandem parking through the use of a valet service, minor building footprint modifications at the southeast building corner, comprehensive landscaping changes, and comprehensive material and color changes. The overall gross floor area would be reduced by 55 square feet, determined that this action is consistent with the adopted mitigated negative declaration for the previously approved project, and none of these circumstances requiring additional environmental analysis exists. See quick guidelines, section 15162. Mr. Pruder.
Good evening, Chair Doe. Thank you, planning commissioners and members of the public. I'll have a quick presentation. I don't have any updates at this time, but I'll start with the presentation. I'll then allow for any staff questions. And then pending no questions, we'll have the applicant have a brief presentation as well, and we can resume from there. Does that sound good? Okay, thank you. I'll share my screen now and begin my presentation. Okay, so as we were talking, it is the Hotel Moxie project coming back for some project revisions at 3725, 23 Haven Avenue. I'll make this as brief as possible, given the time. Quickly, here's a look at the project location highlighted in green. It is in the Bayfront area, near the northern bend of Haven Avenue, close to the intersection of the US 101 freeway, as well as Marsh Road and Bayfront Expressway. We have a quick overview here. Original approval, a little over a year ago, in November 2022. The building was proposed at that time to be eight stories with three stories of podium parking positioned below five stories of hotel rooms, in total 163 rooms. With the current proposal, the proposed revised project, we have a few key items here to just go over. These are the comprehensive updates that are triggering this architectural control revision and use permit revision. We have a height change. They're decreasing from eight to seven stories. So now we'll have two stories of podium parking and five stories of the 163 hotel rooms. We'll have a height increase based on interior heights being increased slightly by a total of six inches. We'll also have the rooftop deck, which was once on the fourth floor, will be on the third floor, so it's lowered by four feet and based on the interior heights of the first through third floor. We also have a parking change that's rather significant. Not only is it two stories instead of three, but there are more stacker parking spaces and additional tandem parking spaces that will be serviced through a valet system that is proposed. We also have comprehensive landscaping changes that actually result in an increase in open space on site, as well as material and color changes that are comprehensive on all four elevations of the building. And based on all the interior changes, there is a reduction of what we recognize as gross floor area by 55 square feet. And just quickly, some visuals here. The applicant will also be showing some of these, but we have some renderings of what was approved on the left and what is proposed on the right. This is looking at the front elevation on kind of the right corner, to the right of the corner, and then to the left is the left elevation. And then just quickly, looking at some of the elevations, I'll go through these just a few seconds each. We can definitely discuss this detail more, but the applicant will briefly explain. You can see the changes here are comprehensive in terms of material and color changes in many places on all four elevations. And with that, I am going to just quickly show the site plan changes. You can see here, parking has been reconfigured, but it's mostly internal and does not really show up in the exterior views of the building anyway. But that's also important to note in how they're achieving the parking that's required. And with that, I'll be available now for questions, and then we can proceed with the applicant who is online tonight, and we can transition when ready. Thank you.
I'm sorry, are we waiting for the applicant?
If you had any, sorry, my, sorry for that. Chair Doe, if there are any questions for staff, myself, I'm happy to answer that now or we can just proceed.
Sure, if there's no burning questions, let's go ahead and proceed with the applicant's presentation.
Great, thank you. I will set that up on my end. And yes, we have Nitin Patel and Al Patel as well who can join us. And I'll put the screen on, on the screen, I'll have the presentation shortly.
Okay, great, thank you. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, great. So really quickly, I'll keep this brief as well, I know it's late, but you know, it's good to see everyone again. Just really wanted to run through some of the floor plan comparison diagrams that we've created throughout this process and just discuss some of the high-level changes that we've had to make due to either building permit comments or any sort of engineering life safety requirements that we've had, had to address throughout the construction document phase. And then also, you know, as Matt stated earlier, you know, we're here for the request to remove one parking level, but obviously, we're still, you know, meeting the Menlo Park code requirement for parking. We can go to the next slide. Okay, so this is a side-by-side comparison of what, on the left-hand side of what was approved at PC, at the initial PC hearing, and then what, what is proposed right now. So, you know, as I mentioned before, throughout the process of our engineering and construction documents, elements and utility rooms had to shift purely to their code, life safety, or some sort of clearance requirements. You know, for example, the electrical rooms that were, you know, tucked underneath the parking ramp then had to shift closer to transformer just based on our coordination with PG&E. But, you know, as you can see conceptually, at a high level, we've, we've kept a lot of the, it's in the same place. We can go to the next slide. This is the second floor parking. Again, as you can see, you know, a lot of this, you know, the parking is laid out in the same way as far as the circulation and the parking layout. As, as I stated earlier, we had to add a couple of rooms, either for fire suppression or electrical requirements, but the main change here is that we had, we did add a number of stackers here to accommodate parking requirement with the reduction of one parking level. Next slide. Yep. So this is the, this is the level that we're proposing to remove. And since we're 100% valet, it really allows us to utilize a parking deck, you know, more efficiently than traditional garages, which allows us to meet the requirements from Menlo Park while still removing that one level. We've been working closely with our valet company, SP Plus, in helping us create these diagrams and to verify, you know, how many, how many spaces we can get on site. Also, obviously, cost was a factor in this decision, you know, just the price of concrete in the past few years has skyrocketed. So we really felt this option was the best way to kind of keep the project moving forward and, you know, while not compromising on any sort of code requirements and operations for the projects, for the project once it's open. Next slide. So fourth floor, this, on the left-hand side was the previous fourth floor, on the right-hand side is the now proposed third floor amenity deck. You know, we just kind of worked with our landscape designers to kind of fine-tune the outdoor amenity areas, but as far as the high-level programmatic, you know, spaces, all those remain the same. Access to the rooftop, this rooftop amenity deck for the public is still accessible via the same stair, stair tower and the elevator core along Haven Avenue. And all the guest rooms and all the public spaces are, you know, leveled in the same This is the typical guest room floor. You know, all core locations, as you can see, elevators and the two stairs are in the same location with the guest rooms at an L shape. We've, you know, we've managed to make the corridor a little bit more efficient, resulting in, you know, the 55 square feet of less gross square footage for the FAR roof. The roof is a little bit more fine-tuned, you know, just kind of going through and working with our engineering. We're able to identify more accurately where the solar array farms are going to be located along with the local equipment, which we are planning to screen. And lastly, this, you know, you just saw this a moment ago that Matt had presented, but on the left-hand side is what we had approved on the previous PC hearing, and then on the right-hand side is what we've proposed. You can see the two main elements that have changed, obviously with the one parking level that's removed and then, you know, at the corner there. At the corner, we were working through the plans and we, we had some issues, kind of getting some clearance requirements for that corner guest room. So we squared that corner off and it kind of gave us an opportunity to create, you know, a nice design feature that also translated into more transparency at the, at the lobby level, which, you know, by us also lowering the hotel, you know, one level closer to the streetscape, and I think it, you know, gives a little bit more of a relationship with, with the overall pedestrian realm as well. I believe that is the last slide. I was going to turn it over to Al Patel, who's part of the development team, who also wanted to speak to some of the public outreach we've also been doing as well.
So good evening, commissioners. You know, I'll try to make this brief as well tonight. I know it's, it's pretty late as well, but I wanted to kind of just touch on a few points of some of the outreach that we've been doing lately. I know on our first, first planning commission meeting last year, you know, it was a, it was a big point, I guess, to really have a good focus on what we're going to be using that public open space for and how we're going to be using it, and really trying to figure out how to activate it and have it really, you know, public friendly. So, you know, we had a, we had a unrequired, I guess is a good way to put it, plan, a public meeting last August there while I was in Menlo Park. We did a considerable amount of advertising about the meeting prior to us hosting it, you know, including, you know, obviously, posters at the Bell Haven Community Center, you know, all the apartment complexes. We purchased an online ad on the Almanac website, put on the community calendar, the Nextdoor app as well. So we, we did quite a bit of advertising of this public meeting we wanted to have, just so we can get an idea of what the public wanted on that, in that open space area that, you know, we're going to be designing at that point. So, you know, based on some of that, we got a little bit of feedback from, you know, the, the Kalam folks Nextdoor and some other folks and, and, you know, implemented some design changes in the public access area where we're going to be out, you know, doing, you know, things like an outdoor movie night, we're going to be doing, you know, art stations and so forth for public use, kind of looking out there onto the salt flats, you know, doing hopefully, you know, some, some yoga classes and so forth, you know, with a, with a beautiful background back there as well. So there's a number of things that we kind of came up with that resulted in, in some of these meetings and so forth. And so, you know, as we'll continue kind of going through the process, you know, some of the other outreach items that we've kind of pinpointed, you know, including jobs and so forth, those are going to be, those meetings will be held, you know, once we start breaking ground, get closer to opening, where we'll have a certain number of job players as well, kind of targeting the local community there and hopefully getting as many people locally on board as we possibly can. And that's it on my end.
Great, thank you. Do any commissioners have clarifying questions for public comment? No? All right then, let's go ahead and take public comment for this project. Mr. Turner? Mr. Turner?
All right, thank you. Again, this is item F6. F6, we do have one comment card. So while we go through that comment, if anybody online would like to give public comment, please click the raise hand button on your screen, and we do not have any callers. So our first speaker will be Brian Shields.
Hello, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Brian Shields, I'm a field rep with Carpenter's Local 217. I've been tracking this project since before Al Patel took over, and it was FPG development when it was coming through entitlements. This is a fantastic opportunity to put, to put good jobs, good blue-collar jobs in Menlo Park. A lot of times, what we find without any kind of labor standard, I understand this is Architectural Review Board, that this is an opportunity for me to speak to it, that without any kind of labor standard or any kind of adherence to it, we find just highway extortion of the workforce. Gray Star is a great example of it, and, and the things that we find over there are just heartbreaking. So in the, the light of not having that happen again, I would love to have some sort of labor standard attached to this, and/or just at least an understanding that a, a union general contractor would be taking care of the project, would be the prime on the project. And the reason why that's important is if you have a union general contractor on a project, that means that, that all the subcontractors that work underneath it have to adhere to the same standards. And, and so that provides for that middle-class life that I get to enjoy, right? Before I was a union, I worked for $18 an hour, and I lived in a trailer with four other guys, three other guys. And I can't tell you how much, you know, every young man dreams of that day. So after getting in the union, I got healthcare, you know, was able to go through the apprenticeship. I mean, it's delivered me to a place in my life where I feel comfortable, and, and I want to be able to deliver that to the same, to as many people as possible, and we could do that through standards. Also, housing element being on the, the agenda tonight, it's applicable because in there is encouraging developers to, can't remember the specific language, I think it's H.8, but it's encouraging developers and contractors essentially to adhere to labor standards, so apprenticeship and local hire. And, and those two things would make all the difference in the world. So, thank you, thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. At this time, I do not have any additional hands raised online and no additional comment cards.
Okay, let's go ahead and close public comment. I think people had enough time. And bring it back to the Commission for Discussion and Action Regarding Revisions to the Previously Approved Architectural Control and Use Permit. This is the last time I'm going to ask this evening, would anyone like to start? Good. Commissioner?
Smith.
She's looking at both. Yeah, you know, I think I saw Commissioner Farrick's let go on. Commissioner Farrick.
All right, I'll go. We each can take a turn going first this evening. My comments will just be brief. I mean, I think the new iteration looks just as good as, as what we saw last year. I'm scrolling through the project documents because I wanted to get to kind of the facade. I noticed the top floor, the, I think it was mentioned too, the, the windows and the heights of the ceilings changed a little bit, in my opinion, for the better. I'm curious, what is the interior ceiling height of a typical guest floor, you know, floors, I guess, four through seven?
Yep, so we're maintaining at the bed height, we're going to be maintaining a nine-foot ceiling with large windows that'll allow a proper amount of daylight in, which is also part of the lead requirements as well. So it's, it's pretty ample ceiling height, and also with the reduction of one level, we will program more additions into the public areas, which allows us nearly minimum of 12 feet of ceiling height.
Great, I mean, yeah, it would be nice if it was even a little higher just for the guest room experience, but the, but I do like that, what the effect of the changes to the windows and just the overall changes to the new version. I really also like that third floor, how it kind of is a nice, kind of visual into the, into that floor, and then appreciate the changes to the parking garage exterior as well. And I'm supportive of the change to a more managed parking solution in order to reduce the number of onsite spaces, not because of cost, but because it provides more kind of space for the parts that humans can enjoy, and it will provide some jobs for some people parking cars. My son may or may not have been a valet all summer, and he loved it, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Farrick. Commissioner Riggs.
So I don't, you heard me, I think, say this a year ago, but just a reminder that this hotel is not in the Bell Haven neighborhood. We've had just a few too many projects that because they're on the so-called east side of 101, which is actually the north side, that they assume that they are related and connected to and supported or at risk of the ire of the Bell Haven neighborhood. And you're actually across the freeway from North Fair Oaks, Redwood City, and the Laurel Lion Suburban Park neighborhoods, which I hope will have some input in the future. I did want to ask regarding the parking, the image on the package seems to show that you've added about a dozen parking spaces per parking floor that are actually in the aisle way. I call this the Facebook classic campus parking method. Is, is that, am I reading that correctly?
That is correct. So I believe I mentioned that we had worked with our valet partner, SP Plus. So they've operated a number of properties here in the Bay Area. Al Patel's actually worked with them on his existing property in Walnut Creek. So because it's 100% valet, we have the ability to park certain vehicles in the valet, or in the drive aisles itself, since they're 100% managing this, and they'll be able to fully function to either add or remove vehicles in the, in the drive aisles, you know, if at 100% capacity.
All right, I think you must realize that you are certainly adding a risk factor, and that the cars visiting Menlo Park may prove rather expensive to repair, including in the last eight years, you can no longer repaint a car in the state of California with the original paint. You may be shipping cars to Nevada each time your valet dings one, but we'll leave that to you. That is not one of our review issues. And then architecturally, there are quite a number of changes here, but I had to tell myself, if I had not seen the version from a year ago, would the version that you present here tonight be something we would pass? And I have to say, yes, we would. So I'm supportive of this project. Frankly, I'm glad that you are moving ahead with what makes sense to you operationally and financially. And I think possibly the most important thing is for us to support your efforts and move you forward. And other Commissioners may have other questions, but for me, this is, these revisions are going to be easy to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. Any other Commissioners? Vice Chair Schindler?
Thank you, Commissioner Doe. Similar to Commissioner Riggs, I am cumulatively supportive of the changes that are proposed here. I think there's, there's no additional use permit request, and I think everything is consistent with what would have been a proposed, were it an original, were this the original version we were seeing. But since it's not, I will comment on the things that caught my eye, both on the sort of the positive and the negative, just by way of feedback. I'm pleased to see that the additional iterations on the outdoor space made it what I think will be just more usable both for guests and for the public. I like the introduction of curves and the variety of different spacing for groups. I love the creativity in the parking solutions. I think we will hold the knowledge of this particular project in our back pocket, as parking tends to come up fairly frequently on, on large projects, and on small ones in this city. I'm glad, pleased to see that the feedback from the city arborist was incorporated just into the planting designs, because which, which species get used has come up on a couple of occasions here, too. I happen to like the changes to the glazing. I know that the reduction in millions may not be everybody's cup of tea, but I happen to like that. The one thing that sort of struck me, and I wish as, as sub, as suboptimal on the second version compared to the first one, was the way that the reddish-orange faces of the building are now interrupted by the white slash gray horizontal lines at the top and bottom of the, the open space of the deck. To me, that just kind of, it makes the building look chopped in half a little bit more than it, than it did. And I know that's also in part because that one prominent corner is no longer notched, it's squared. So I think the combination of those two things is what led to the current proposal, but it just looks a little shorter and boxier to me, even though it's six inches taller. That's completely subjective, and I'm also not an architect, so I don't claim that that's sort of worth tweaking anything, but that was my just aesthetic notice. But I'm fully supportive of the package as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Schindler. I will just add to the comment about the orange, the orange element. I think it's fine that it's truncated by the horizontal element, if you look at a perspective, how at the, at the, at the corner of the building, there's a piece of that orange that continues through the restaurant. When I look at it, it just seems like if on the edges, it could also, the orange could just continue the frame. I don't, I don't know if that change is possible at this moment, but just to imply the continuity of that orange volume, I don't know if that made sense. I'm seeing, I'm seeing a nod. But again, I, it's, at this point, I do overall agree with staff's recommendation that this project essentially is the same in spirit and how it functions as a hotel. I did, I will just only briefly mention it because it's not an action that we are acting on today, but there's a note in your letter about the use of a diesel generator. Again, I know it's not something we're acting on today, it's something, your letter says you'll do at a later date. I hope that the fact that it comes at a later date is an opportunity to revisit a generator that does not run on diesel. I think you say that diesel is reliable, and I don't know too much about this. I do know that a diesel, diesel would need to be delivered via a truck coming from somewhere. So in that sense, I feel like, you know, traffic conditions, bad weather, in a way, diesel also has its own drawbacks of convenience, independency. So I would just implore you to reconsider that, if that's something that you can do at this time. But other than that, supportive of these changes as well. And I, I apologize, I don't believe Commissioner Eric, you've had a chance to speak.
I agree with other Commissioners' comments, and I'll just say in particular that I'm pleased to see that they were able to decrease the, or get rid of one parking level. I had the chance to meet with Al Patel when he was out here a few months ago, and we talked about that as something that was possible, so I'm pleased to see that that's happening, and overall, really excited for this project. I hope it moves forward quickly.
Thank you, Commissioner Eric. You know, I'll just make one more comment. I, I don't know anything about the construction trade and, and labor, I will just write out say that, but I just want to just acknowledge and thank our public commenter for sticking with us till the very end. And again, I know nothing about all that, but you did mention, our public commenter mentioned the extortion of the workforce and labor happening with Gray Stars. So I just, I just want to somehow just acknowledge and, and lift up, you know, just good wages and livable wages for, for, for people who are working to build our communities and, employing locally. And you mentioned future job fairs to attract local talent, so I just want to emphasize appreciation for that. Commissioner Riggs?
Yes, I think since we've all had a chance to talk, I would like to make a motion, but as long as you bring up the labor issue, I would like to just say that particularly in the Bay Area, the difference between skilled workers and unskilled workers has only become more pronounced over the last 15 to 20 years, to the point where I would hope that a developer and a contractor, including a non-union contractor, recognizes that if he wants skills in the trade and a building that will not be a warranty nightmare, that the apprenticeship program is how that is available. But I don't think it's our position to, to manipulate or direct that. So I will simply go ahead and make the motion to adopt a resolution approving the use permit and architectural control permit revisions.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs, for the first. Would anyone like to, Commissioner Eric?
I'm happy to second.
Great, and the action we are voting on is to make a resolution to approve the revisions to the architectural control and use permit that were previously approved. There's no additional questions or discussions, let's go ahead and vote. Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schindler?
Yes.
I am also a yes, that's five yeses, one absent, and the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
All right, so we can close the public hearing portion of our evening tonight, and informational items, Mr. Perata.
Yes, thank you. So one item, so looking ahead, the next scheduled meeting is January 22nd. At this point, it is very likely that staff will be canceling that meeting. We just want to give us a few more days to confirm if there's any agenda topics, but this happens sometimes with the holidays, we end up with a little lull, and some meetings, you know, we're busy before the holiday, a little bit of a lull this meeting, and then we likely will pick up again in February, but stay tuned, we'll, we'll confirm that shortly, but in the meantime, the Commission can start thinking about the possibility of having the night off on the 22nd.
Thank, thank you. Any questions for staff? If there are no questions, this meeting is adjourned.